Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nice to see a full house this evening. Welcome to the regular session of council for June the 28th. In council chambers again, but being livestreamed on our YouTube channel. Also, if you wish to follow the agenda, it is available on our website at GreaterNapony.com. With that, I will ask for an adoption of the agenda, but we have a few amendments, if we could, please. We need to remove 6.1 and 6.2, please. And I'd like to amend the agenda to have 12.1, 12.2, and 12.3 follow 5.5. I would take a motion then to adopt, as amended, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Councilor McCormack. Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Counselor Panal.
Thank you, worship. I have conflict with 5.3, 5.4, 12.2, 12.3, and 13.2. Perceived -- sorry, I work with a coworker, and it's another woman's family matters.
Okay, thank you. Any further disclosures? Presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first one, 4.1, is the 2022 Senior of the Year Award. Judy, I would ask you to come forward, as well as Counselor McCormack, please. I have to use this mic so that those that are in YouTube land. Judy, this is an honor. I always think this is one of our best compliments to anyone for the Senior of the Year. You could have probably been the Junior of the Year, the Mid-Amateur of the Year, and the Senior of the Year. I know how hard you have worked on many, many things. Always been nice to have you as a friend, as a supporter of heritage, and so many other things that go. I'd like to let Counselor McCormack have a chance, who was your nominator, to say a few words about how much you have contributed to not just the area in the South, but certainly all over. I think I can get you there, John.
Thank you, worship. When any one of us, we look around in the community, and we try and think of deserving people, for me, Judy was at the top of the list. I really didn't consider anybody else, not that there aren't others, but Judy just came to mind. She's extremely well-known, been a farmer for as long as we'd like to remember. It's a century farm. Her and her family continue the tradition of being dairy farmers and whatnot, but when Judy and I started going through the history of all the volunteering that she had done, there was so much, it was really incredible. Most probably Judy was one of the spearheads of the first recycling program in Greater Napanee, and that's a story by itself. But anyways, not to keep it going, I'm very proud to be involved in recognizing Judy for this award this year, and thank you very much for everything you've done.
Judy, would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Oh, yes. [laughter]
I'd like to thank you very much for this award. It certainly is an honor to have this, to be Senior of the Year for Greater Napanee. And I'd like to thank my counselor of Ward One, John McCormick, for nominating me. Thank you very much, John. Glad to have you at my kitchen table, and we talked for quite a while. I've always liked belonging to organizations in my community, and even abroad, and things that take part in my own church. And my family have always stood behind me in any endeavor that I decided to take. And the chairs you brought in tonight, I'm afraid, are for most of my family. They all seem to want to come to see Mom do something tonight, so I'm glad for their If you remember in my application, I said my motto was, "Don't count your days, make your days count." And I firmly believe that the seniors of Napanee, and the Greater Napanee, I should say, are making their days count. They're still working in organizations and volunteering their hours, even though we're all getting a little older, we're still out there trying to make it a better community for which we all want to live in. And I thank you again for recognizing me tonight, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I don't -- I think probably the family would like to get some pictures, so I'll get this mic out of my way. And then, if the family wants to come up here, we're going to take the time so that we can get a group photo of you as well, okay? Does the family like to come up and get a picture with all of you in together? This is -- not too often you can gather this many people together, and that's good to see. Sorry, Michelle.
That's okay.
You snuck in there on me.
Yeah, I thought I'd take advantage of the crowd.
I'll let you go ahead, please.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Councilors, members of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, and members of the public watching here and from home, friends and family members. It's my sincere pleasure to stand, or sit before you tonight, as to present the Arts and Culture Lifetime Achievement Award to Mr. Tim Nimigan. It's no secret that Tim has served our community for many years, making it a more vibrant, caring, and whimsical place to live. I did not have the pleasure of being one of Tim's high school art students at NDSS, where he taught for 30 years, but I can tell you that I have met many of them, and that they all remembered him as a caring and creative teacher who gave them an appreciation for the arts. I first got to know Tim long before I met him, through his remarkable comics in the Napanee Beaver. Since 2003, Tim's editorial cartoon, Our Town, has become a bi-weekly source of mirth for Greater Napanee and beyond. His witty depictions of small-town life are not your typical political commentary. More often, Tim offers a wink to small-town citizens who can easily recognize the comic exploits of self or neighbors. Now, in retirement, while continuing his cartooning, Tim has become an advocate for the arts in his town and across Ontario, serving as the vice-chair and then-chair of the first-ever Greater Napanee Arts Advisory Committee, and now is past-chair in the second committee. Tim oversaw Greater Napanee's palatable art program, a public art initiative using wooden industrial pallets, or skids, to create multiple outdoor art installations commissioned by local businesses, nonprofits, and individuals, and painted by local artists with diverse techniques and expertises. Because of Tim's efforts, Napanee has a unique public art initiative that draws tourists and delights residents. Currently, 30 pallets adorn different sites in the town of Greater Napanee, forming a tour of -- sorry, a tour trail of art around the community, complete with QR codes to inform the viewer. The art often pops up where you might not expect a burst of color or story to appear. As I've gotten to know Tim, I have seen that he is both an artist and a teacher at heart. I once asked him what he was most proud of, and Tim, ever humble, told me he finds it difficult to wax eloquent about what he is most proud of, preferring to use the words "most satisfied." "I am satisfied," he said, "when my cartoon work strikes a chord with someone. I'm trying to hold a mirror up to life, and when you see yourself or recognize a situation and find the humor in it, that makes me happy." On teaching art, he said, "I enjoy inspiring other people. To see young children who enjoy it, and then work to improve their skills, and then find that they can improve them, that is satisfying." Even over these last few difficult years, when our committee and most of the world was forced to isolate, Tim managed to keep busy promoting the arts. He ran a cartoon contest for kids through the Beaver. He released his most recent book, Our Town is Your Town, and he had a recent exhibit at the Lenox and Additaine County Museum. Tim found new ways to inspire the community, hosting drive-by book signings and personal virtual tours of his exhibit. Becoming a virtual visitor to elementary classrooms was especially entertaining for Tim, watching kids use technology to find their way through the exhibit, asking fun questions he'd not thought about, and appearing on the classroom projection system via Microsoft Teams. He told me a story. "I was at a local craft show," he said, "signing my books, and a little girl said, 'Look, Mom, that's the man from my TV in my classroom.'" It felt a bit like being a celebrity. "Tim, whether you like it or not, you are a celebrity, and it's our pleasure to celebrate you and your contributions to our town. Napanee is a more colorful, kinder, brighter place to live because of your lifetime of efforts and achievement." And I asked CA Cabers to come forward with an award to present to Tim. I asked you to come forward, Tim, and also Deputy Mayor Max Kaiser, who's our representative on council. This award is a custom design that's hand-fabricated, carved, and etched in jade crystal. The Inukshuk is a meaningful graphic representing the stone or ice carins erected in the Arctic thousands of years ago by Canada's indigenous people, the Inuit. Nomadic by nature and necessity, the Inuit used the Inukshuk to serve directional landmarks, as directional landmarks. The Inukshuk helps direct those who follow by pointing the way in which the band traveled, the new hunting grounds, to avoid dangerous terrain, or to the sea. The Inukshuk serves as a meaningful messenger, sign of humanity, and symbolizes the importance of communication by a people who are determined to survive and succeed in a very challenging environment. It is a universal symbol for the importance of unity, friendship, and of our dependence on each other. Thank you.
I'm rather shy in retiring when it comes to speaking. I can recall as a -- but first of all, I should acknowledge that on all the projects that I've been involved in, we've had the support of the past mayor and council, the current mayor and council, which we appreciate, and support from businesses and individuals that sponsored on the pallet project. We've had people do things from the business community to accommodate some of the things we were doing. Brianna Clement, I owe you a huge thank you for all the work she's done on the website. If you just type in pallet art on the open website, it'll bring you right to Napanee. You don't even have to have the proper name for it, which is palatable art. But anyway, I should mention that when we put the QR codes on, I think it was Mike and I were putting them out one day, and we were working along the boardwalk from Springside Park down towards Conservation. We got all of them done down that way and started walking back. We got halfway back, and there was a group of tourists from Toronto already with their cameras out, using the QR codes. But that was rather fulfilling, so. One last thing I'd like to say, if I can remember what it was. Oh, yes. I remember as a teenager going to art galleries and art shows and reading the bio, some very nice things being said about the artist, and I can remember thinking, "One of these days, I hope I'm good enough to, you know, have an art show and somebody write a nice bio about me." Then you grow up, and you realize that when you go into some of these art shows, they ask you to send along a bio. So in other words, you write all those nice things about yourself, and they don't, unless you're really in the big leagues, right? So, Michelle, it was nice of you to write all those nice things. I did not supply her with the speech tonight, so thank you very much. Thank you to the mayor and council, I really appreciate it, and the staff as well. Thank you.
We are going to continue on with the next part of the council meeting, which is as interesting as it may be to some, I'm sure that you would like to get out the door. I would like to thank everyone that was involved. Nice to be able to recognize people that have done a lot of good in our communities, and I can't think of two more deserving recipients tonight of both awards. And thanks for all the support from family and friends and committees for coming. Thank you very much. If you'd like to go, we'll take a five-minute recess, please.[1075.92]
Okay, thank you, and we're back just after a break to sort of clear out the room and let everybody else come in that was able to come in. Just before we go any farther, I know that there had been someone collecting names of those that wanted to speak, and I want to make sure that I do have everyone's name here that did want to speak to us tonight. Can those people who have signed the list, stand up, just identify so that I know who's here? Yeah, okay, Dan? So I've got four names and four people, so we're good. Okay, thank you. Oh, did you sign the list, sir?
No.
Okay, and what's the name?
Your worship, that's with respect to...
Oh, that's with respect to another one, okay.
Five point four.
Yeah, five point four, no, thanks. I knew I should recognize you, Sheldon, sorry, we're both getting old. Okay, we'll get back into the, sorry, public meeting. Note that this is a meeting to hear public comments on a specific topic, but it's not a statutory meeting within the meaning of the Planning Act. So first I will look please for a resolution to convene the public meeting. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Councilor Norrie, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried, thank you. First on the list will be five point two, lane closure and sale request, application one. The applicant, James and Sarah Nguyen, the location, the land near Loyalist Parkway, described as between lots eleven and twelve, concession one, geographic township of Fredericksburg. You do have a public notice within the agenda, which I'm not sure that everybody has in front of them, comments from the applicants, some of them have been updated from ones that we have received even as late as this afternoon, public comments against the road closing, and additional comments that we received on the 24th. So, I think what I will start with is just, I'm glad that you have chosen four people who will come up and speak. I'll call you up. If you would then just state your names, we do have your addresses here, just so that the clerk has it for information. And I would ask you to stick to ten minutes, I'm going to let people have their say. I would ask the rest of the people who are here in the crowd to be listening to what people saying. I'd like this to be an informative, respectful meeting between all of us, we're all looking for information to try and see if we can't come to some sort of an agreement and understanding of what the needs are of everybody that's in the room. So I will first, is it, and the clerk will certainly be able to answer any of the questions that have to do with the legal ramifications and some of the things that we have to really be able to do and make sure that we do them properly. So I do have an Alan, is it Leeson, your handwriting is worse than mine. Okay, come on up, please. Sorry about that, but your handwriting is as bad as mine. If you just have a seat there, Mr. Leeson, and then there's a, and speak into the microphone so that the people at home, you can either stand or sit, but probably they could hear you better at home if you are sitting. Perfect, thank you, sir.
Well, anyway, I've been in this area for almost fifty years. I've used that road constantly. If it's dry weather, I have problems with water, I have to go to the closest position I can get to water. Other than that, a tractor drive is a long ways. And this road shouldn't be shut, there are a lot of people use it, and it's not just me. You can take a small boat down there, a canoe, or anything like that, it's a comfortable area. And nobody has ever touched or damaged anything on that road in all the time I've been here. The road has never been touched, there hasn't been any crops touched, the apples haven't been touched. The people are kind enough to go down the middle of the road, and he's actually got crops right now halfway through the road, he's growing them at the moment, or they're there. So, he's got his road, he wants to have two separate places, have him put a fence down like it used to be here, four, nine years ago, there was a fence there. As the property changed hands, things disappeared. The road used to be used constantly. But anyway, that's pretty much all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone on council have any questions for the gentleman? Nope, seeing none, thank you very much, sir. Dan Garrison, please. Hi, Dan, how are you?
Oh, good, thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't normally come here before you too often. I lived in that area, like Al said, all my life. We use this number, it's called number eleven. At one time, when I was a young lad, we used to drive vehicles all the way through it, from my place, I live on the north end of it, and you're suggesting that we close it on, or the, I mean, the suggestion is to close it on the south end. I'm afraid that it may move on north, I'm a little concerned once you start these process of closing a road, I think it's a wrong move to close any road to the waterfront, regardless whether it's in South Fredericksburg, Robben, anywhere. We have limited access to the road anywhere in this town, greater Napanee, we have limited access anywhere. And now we're suggesting we close it to Lake Ontario, I think it's the wrong move. I understand, I know the people that are applying for it, I understand why they're doing it, but I don't understand why would we close this road for no reason. It was a, it's been an unmaintained road all my life, and nobody has, as Al said, nobody has damaged anything, nobody has, it, you know, went on property that I know, and all of a sudden, because of new ownership, we, all of a sudden council has to make a decision on whether to close this road. But I strongly believe that no road to, access to the waterfront, it doesn't matter whether it's Napanee River, whether it's anywhere, we should never, ever, and I've said on council before, I, you know, we've made these decisions, I sat on South Fredericksburg Council, and we've made these decisions before, we don't close roads to main, to waterfront, there's just no reason for it. And it, Mr. Kaiser, I say, no different, it's a, it's a bad move, I don't understand why would you even consider closing a road, like, what's, what's, what is the gain on closing a road to the waterfront that we have access to already? Because you, as we all know, there are very few, Mark, I read your name in the paper, saying, you're looking for boat launches. No, it's not going to be a boat launch, but it is an access to a road, access to a darn good waterfront, I know paddle people use it, skiers use it, hikers use it, the whole stra, it's a long stretch of road, it's probably ten or fifteen kilometers long from my property to the lake. Why would we close that? It's, you know, it's open on both ends, so I mean, I don't see the purpose in closing. Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Dan. Any questions of Dan before?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, no, I forgot to ask. No, I think everything's good, Dan, thank, yeah, thank you, thank you so much, sorry to make you come back. I have a difficult last name, so I try to make sure that I pronounce things properly, but I'm going to have trouble with this one. Can you help me out, whoever lives at ninety-four fifty-nine Loyalist Parkway, please? Thank you, sir, and please take that with the utmost of respect. Come forward, can you give us your name, please?
My surname is Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving opportunity to speak up. I'm a new owner of ninety-four sixty...
Excuse me, just a sec, can you come up as close as you can to the microphone, only because we like people, people are watching us online too, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
I'm new owner of ninety-four sixty-nine Loyalist Parkway, last year. But the first few days I arrived, my well dried, I have no water, my nice neighbor helped me to get water from the same road that James proposed to close. The last year from that time until December, I have no water, I have to get water from the lake to feed my chicken, ducks, and this happened this year. Now, I look at my well, the water is very low, I'm afraid I will have the same problem this year. I think that's essential for us to live there for now, I think even for future. I think it shouldn't be closed, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? No, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And the last person that we have signed up would be Carolyn Allen. Now, I'm not sure what, the Winds maybe didn't, did you get a chance to sign the sheet, were you wishing to speak tonight? Okay, fine, thank you, I knew you came in a little, please come up, Carolyn, thank And Carolyn, if you just make sure that you speak into the mic so that people can hear at home, please, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to speak and express our concerns tonight. I just wanted to say that we feel that we don't believe that the county road eleven should be closed either, it's been a water access, to my knowledge, I believe, for centuries, I think back to the seventeen hundreds. My family, my husband's family has certainly used that waterway access for decades. My husband is a part of a commercial fishing operation family, they've used that access many times to bring boats up onto the shoreway, to either unload fish and go back out again, or to have us come in and meet them. They've used that access to launch, we've used it ourselves for our immediate family, our children when they were younger, we've used the water access to launch kayaks, canoes, boats, the kids have gone fishing, we've used that area to duck hunt, we also have hauled water to use for our well, we bring the water in for our farm as well, for our cattle, our livestock, our chickens, you know, we've used it for our gardens. It's just been such, in my opinion, and our family's opinion, a vital part of the community for a very long time. I know certainly I can speak for myself and my family, that we're always very respectful of the township property and the private property, and have been in all the decades that we've used it. I certainly can understand their desire to close it, to have the properties joined, but to block the access for the community, I don't think is the right way to do that. They do a nice job to keep the roadways and the side of the roadways maintained and cleaned, and that's certainly appreciated, and again, the community is respectful of that. However, I don't think that just because you're going to maintain that property, that it would give you more of a right or, you know, an assumption that you can, you know, own that property. People that live in town, if you cut the grass on the boulevard, that doesn't mean you own that property, the township still does, even though you're maintaining it on their behalf. Again, I just think that it would be a very unfortunate thing. Many, many of our neighbors have used that water access, you know, as Martin said, to haul water for his family for his well, the Leesons, several of us have used it for many different things. And again, I hope that council will take that under consideration, it's been open for many, many years, and it just would be a huge disservice to the community to close it and block off a water access. And I guess then the question would be, if you were going to allow that to go through, and whatever money is brought forward to council from the purchase of that land, then where does that money go, where would that be used? Would that be used to provide water access to the community in another, in another area, in another site? I don't think that that would be cost effective, in my opinion, but anyway, that's all that I have to say this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions of Mrs. Allen? No, thank you very much for coming forward. Mr. and Mrs. Nguyen, would you like to come forward, please? Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, your worship.
I'll let you go ahead, same, if you just try to come as close as you can to the mic so everyone at home can hear as well, please.
Absolutely, so, your worship, the first thing I really want to address as the kind of the number one comment for this evening is relationships within the community. It is very important to both Jim and I that we maintain good relationships with our neighbors, and we realize that there are some people that are not happy with our desire to purchase this laneway, and we always pride ourselves on being part of the community, and even just within our agritourism business, wanting to embrace not just one small area, but a larger area, and make our community proud. And so it is in no way, shape, or form our attempt to insult or upset anybody. The reality for Jim and I is we, as a community members, whether somebody's having a medical emergency, a fire, or a water crisis, where they're going to be there to help if they call us. I know back in the fall, somebody was having a difficult time with their well, and they'd been mucking up the laneway, and Jim actually went over to their house and helped them problem solve and find a solution to be able to have their well work better. So we are, we want to be approachable people to the individuals in our community, so that we don't want to be just seen as trying to take something, we want a better community, and we want to do that also within this, with this agritourism business. So, we purchased the land, lot eleven and twelve, very recently, and it didn't take us very long to recognize that there is actually quite a bit of issues as owners of eleven and twelve, and I think it really roots back to the fact that eleven and twelve owners prior didn't really, they weren't around, so a lot of things kind of, people turned eleven and twelve often into their own backyard, I guess you could say, or maybe like a public space. And so we started to realize that some of the issues that we're having are quite a bit of safety issues, in all honesty. So, we're finding a lot of shotgun shells on the property, we're finding beer cans, beer bottles, a great deal of waste, it's turned, it really is a dumping zone, we, in that forest around the property, a lot of hazardous waste. I know part of my deputation on the May tenth meeting, I sent images of the items, we're talking like oil tanks, batteries, tires, tons of tires on the property, and Jim and I are working at cleaning up that mess, but it's a challenge. And we also are having issues with trespassing, we do understand that people enjoy using the laneway, but it's, whether it's trespassing on foot, ATV, snowmobile, people realistically, and not everyone in the community, right, but enough that it's really created a problem, are adventuring into other areas that they do not own. And we recently, on our sunflower field, had somebody bolt, like, come right through, and there are sunflowers planted with an ATV, and we had to kind of chase them down and ask them to please and thank you, get off. We've had, you know, a boat launch in the end of April after two solid days of rain, made a big mess of the waterfront area, they've been back, it's been two months and it hasn't been fixed. So there's just a lot of issues where Jim and I are having to take responsibility for cleaning up, and in all honesty, we have a lot of other things that we could be doing than cleaning up, and so we've looked at possible, lots of possible solutions to this. And realistically, the solution, in honesty, that we're seeing is fencing is going to be something that can help protect the land. A lot of, when it comes to an agritourism aspect, we are looking at inviting thousands of people to this land. We love being part of the agritourism industry, we love sharing our land with others, but we love doing it in a very structured way for safety. Safety is always number one for us, and, you know, having an ATV or a vehicle with a boat coming down a laneway when there's, you know, young children and guests wandering around just becomes a safety issue, seeing gunshell casings around, it's a safety issue. So the reality is, we want to protect our children who are wandering that land, we need to protect our staff, we need to protect our guests, and we need to be able to, I mean, it becomes a liability issue, in all honesty, and in order for us to safely run our farm, we see that this laneway needs to close, in all honesty, so that, so that people are safe. And we, we have, I guess you could say, like, a code of conduct, professional conduct, and so it would become a bit of a challenge if you have a forty-foot laneway where maybe rules didn't quite apply, or people went swimming and were not offering swimming at the farm for safety purposes. So that is of concern. The next interesting thing that we've found out quite recently is actually the laneway is not the laneway. A survey was completed by Ronald Clancy Services, Survey Services, and the laneway is actually quite different than what people envision. So to launch a boat, it, it, it's, it won't even allow for that without cringing on our space, and we're already having to worry about the damage that's already been created. A vehicle even just going down, to be able to go down, turn around, and come back, it's not even a feasible option. Yes, Jim and I are, we are taking care of the greater town of Napanee land right now, the forty feet, and we are doing so, we want things to look beautiful, but also they, I mean, we're seeing a lot of wild parsnip on greater town of Napanee area, and the reality is, if somebody comes onto Wind Farm's property and they come in contact with it, even if it's on greater town of Napanee land, that becomes a liability issue for us. If somebody gets hurt and they're on the greater town of Napanee laneway but wander off onto ours, we really are concerned about the liability aspects. We want the farm to be fun, but we also need to be conscientious of protecting, protecting our liability here. So I think that, I think that's basically it, it's just the safety aspect, the fact that the laneway really truly isn't actually where the laneway is, the laneway is grass, part of a field, and a lot, a lot of trees and bush, and so that would, that causes a problem.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sarah, thank you, Jim, yeah, any questions of Sarah or Jim? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I need to note and receive? We'll go on to five point three, lane closure, sale and request, application two, the applicant is Gilbert Myatt, who I know is in the room with us, the land between four thirty-four and four fifty-four, Palace Road, that is all of West Street and part of Napanee Street, registered plan eighty-one. So is there anyone here that wanted to speak to this application? Mr. Myatt, did you wish to speak to it? No? Okay, we shall go on then to the next one, which would be the lane closure, which is five point four, lane closure and sale request, application three, the applicant is Bill McCutcheon, the location is the land near Pine Grove Road, described as part lot fourteen and fifteen, concession seven, Richmond. We do have Mr. Sheldon Young, who has registered to speak to this, Mr. Young, if you'd like to, you'll have to, if you can get out, come forward, otherwise the people at home can't hear you, sorry, we've kind of got you locked in there.
Thank you, Mayor, your honor, and Council. I'm here with my brother-in-law, Rich, on behalf of my father-in-law, Bill Switzer, he's ninety-three. We're not here to oppose the closing of the road, we're here to ask that we have a legal registered ownership to the property.
Okay, okay, anything else that you wanted to add, any questions of council on this one? So it is ownership or easement that you're looking for?
We just want, we want it registered, and we want, yeah, easement to Bill's property, because he has...
Okay, so that he has access, access to his land, okay, yeah, thanks very much, Mr. Young.
And if I could have, when it's done, I don't know what legal department does it, but if we could have a copy of paperwork that we have access...
Yeah, if approved, it will be registered on title, and I think you can arrange for a copy.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Bill, did you wish to speak to this?
I spoke to Jessica.
Yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to come up, sorry, so that everybody can, at home can hear you, this is the thing with live streaming.
So I've commented Jessica back with email, I think she has a copy, that I'm willing to give them an easement, that's no problem.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. McCutcheon? Go ahead, Council Richardson.
I don't believe it's of Mr. McCutcheon, I think maybe it's more of our clerk with respect to the bylaw, there's number seven in the bylaw, it talks about the condition of conveyance, is that what we're talking about here this evening, or is that something else? It talks about the easement shall be registered on title, so would that be the easement that Mr. Young and Mr. McCutcheon are talking about now?
I'll let you go through, and if you could pull your, a little bit closer to you, I think they're having a tough time. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Through your worship, yes, it is, and that is currently sitting with our lawyer being drafted, to make sure it addresses everyone's concerns.
Okay, very good, then, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Young, were you able to hear that?
No.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to, Council Richardson had asked, I know it's a terrible room to hear in, Council Richardson had asked about how the registering and so on goes, and the clerk had replied that it would be looked after, am I right, Madam Clerk? Okay. Okay? So I would look then, please, for a resolution to adjourn the public meeting, if there are no further questions. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Councilor McCormack, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. So now we're going to go to twelve point one, which we have put in the, moved ahead of the other things in the agenda, so that everybody doesn't have to sit and wait quite so long. So your first one is a staff report from our clerk regarding the approval of closing and conveying unopened road allowance with the Winds, the recommendation is that council receive for information the legislative services approval of closing and conveying unopened road allowance, Nguyen, report, and further, that council provide direction on the approval of the road closure and conveyance bylaw, subject to the consideration of the written and verbal submissions received up to and including the council meeting. Council's wishes, or any questions that we need to have directed, please, to Madam Clerk.
I have attended the property half a dozen times. The requests in the beginning seemed to be a fair request. I did come, I did mention though, that road closers in the past, depending on the amount of resistance that's offered, can go either way. As Mrs. Wind pointed out, the survey was conducted and the road that everybody's been using is now on private property, 90% of it anyways. And at the shore, it's completely private property. What the town owns is over to the side, and it's got trees and bushes and at the water, it's fully treat. So I find this very, very complicated and it's difficult to come up with a solution because I don't think anybody would not understand that if you own property, it's your property, you don't want people coming on your property. And there's the other side where the people that want to keep the road allowance, I think that's a fair request, but what the town owns is not what's been used all these years. So my own personal opinion right now is I'd like to have more discussion, I think there's got to be a solution somewhere, but I don't see it happening this evening. And my request would be that we, we go with option number three, and we'll see what the others have to say about that.
Okay. Are there council members wish to speak to this? Go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just echo what Counsel McCormack has said. On the surface of this, and right from the start, it appeared to be very straightforward, but it doesn't. And then, of course, complicated by the fact that the, the road allowance that we all assumed was a road allowance really isn't the road allowance. So I, I think we need to look at this a little bit deeper, and we need to see if we can't come up with some, some solutions that will try to make as many people happy with this as we can. And they may not exist, but I do think that we need to dig a little bit deeper into this, and we need to look at it. And like I say, it, it seems to have complicated and we seem to have stumbled upon it by asking for a survey of the road to find out that the road that everyone has used for the past 45 or 50 years really isn't the road. So I really do think that we need to dig a little deeper in this and see what options we have as a municipality and for the stakeholders that are involved in this to, to see what solution we can come up with, I think.
Okay, thank you. I'll go with Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and then Counsel Johnson, did you have your hand up as well, Counsel Norrie? Okay, so we'll go right down the road then, how would that be? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. As a large rural property owner, I understand the challenges of having land at a distance to your home, it's hard to keep a watchful eye on it. And we, certainly on our property, we, we see a lot of visitors who come through without permission. And this is a property that does not have a municipal road allowance on it. I can't possibly keep up to the permission of all the people that use it, there's people that I don't even know that are using it. Having said that, by and large, the largest percentage of them are respectful, and I almost don't even know they're there. They stay on the laneway, they stay on the grass, they make no marks, and they stay off the fields. But having said that, every once in a while, there's a bad apple that wanders through and they think it seems fair game, it's pretty smooth out there, might be fun to do a donut in your four-wheel drive, whatever. And that just spoils it so much. And so I understand where the winds are coming from when you see any sort of activity, and to have actually witnessed a four-wheeler drive across the field while they were in, inside of it, a planted field, you can't imagine how that can infuriate a farmer who takes such care of their property. And, and the Winds certainly, and I've known, Jim, I've known your dad before, you, you guys take such good care of your property, you invest heavily in your farmlands. And so I see the concern, but, you know, I also know that there's a balance in here, and I don't know where it is. Certainly, we've seen by the staff report that there's no record of this ever actually being officially opened for public use. It's, it exists as title, and we've seen, and I attended the property too with, with your worship and Counsel McCormack, following the survey being done, so we saw where the trees are and where the usage has been. And they're close, but you know, if, if, if the, if the Winds, as property owners chose to fence off their property, there would be no one getting to the water. You physically couldn't. You could walk there, but I don't even think you could get a kayak to the shoreline and stay within the municipal road allowance because of the coverage that the trees give now. So it's a bit of a pickle. It's a property that if, if that were to happen and the town were to try to preserve that usage, we'd have to make an investment in time and effort and money to keep that road accessible to the residents. And that's not on the list right now. That's certainly not a road that we want to have any maintenance or ongoing care for. And we've got roads that are actually roads and had been roads and gravel and all the rest of it that aren't maintained anymore either. So, you know, this is a balancing point for counsel, for the, for the fiduciary responsibility that we have to the community. And so I support the idea that was raised by the two counselors already, that this is something that needs more discussion, we need more input from staff, we need some more context in it. I know the historical nature of it in relation to the Danforth Trail, although I don't think it's significant in this portion of, of the various access points, but, you know, I'm going to stop there, I, I think we need to talk more about it.
Thank you, Counsel Norrie, and I'll go to you, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, your worship. Just not much different, but just as a city boy and an urban counselor, I did a drive down there yesterday and had a look after seeing the survey, and people's private property is people's private property. But my concern too is for people that need water. Is there any way we can look into somewhere, because at $2 a liter plus, we don't need people driving a long ways, and it must cost them a fortune with their equipment. So we need more dialogue, we have to look at both sides. But if they're driving on people's property, they can't be doing that either, if the survey says that. That's just black and white. I hope we can look and find somewhere where people can get the water they need for their farms, their chickens. Don't want to block them right off, that's all.
Yeah, thank you. Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. It's going to be a lot of the same. It's interesting, when I went to the property and I saw where the stakes were, and there's this, on the blueprint, there's this really nice straight line. And whether it's farm property, or bush, or rural property, people tend to move the roads to get around puddles. Nobody has been maintaining this road. It's an unassumed road there, so the road has meandered back and forth through private property over a period of time. It was really interesting that Mr. Lezon says, recognized that years ago there was a fence there, and the road was straight. It's nowhere near that line now, and if the Winds were to put a fence up, it would be just completely inaccessible for anybody else. As everyone else has noted already, the actual boat launch is on private land. I don't know what it would cost the town if we wanted to make the laneway accessible. It's not now, there's trees in the way, there's ruts in the way, there's puddles, or well, in wet weather, there is puddles in the way. And I appreciate the people who have used the property with respect and taken care of it over the years. But as Mac said, there are those that don't. And unfortunately, the ones that don't damage the ability for others to enjoy it. The people who have been using it weren't the ones who did the cleanup. The people who have been using it didn't pick up the couch or the tires that were laying on the property. They just continued to access what they wanted to use the property for. So that needs to be considered as well. There has not been, the people who have been using the property up till this point have not been taking good care of the property, they have not maintained the road, they have not made sure the road does not go on private property. But again, I understand what everybody's saying about water access, but there is more water access within a reasonable distance. Finding a balance to solve this problem, I think will take just a little bit more time. And if we don't close the unassumed road, and we need to fix it, how much is that going to cost, and how long is it going to take to do that work?
Okay, thank you. Counsel Pennell?
Thank you, your worship. Much the same as everything, like everyone else has spoke about. With the, with the new survey completed, it certainly has opened up a can of worms. So I'd like to find some kind of a solution for both parties on this. But I would like to ask, while we're here and the Winds are here, if, until we find a solution, if they would still allow, even though that the survey clearly shows that over the years, people have been taking the path of least resistance to get around things, and that the roadway is on private property. I would just like to ask, until we can find a solution, if the Winds would allow people to still gain access going forward, until we can find something.
I'm going to go ahead and let the Winds, I think, Counsel Pennell, I know you'd like an answer to that question. I don't want to put the Winds on the spot to answer it, but I will allow them to give their opinion of it. Yes, please sit down Sarah, so that they can hear you at home.
I think that if people are willing to use it in a respectful manner for a temporary period of time, I don't think we have a huge concern with that. We don't want boats, in all honesty, being launched, because it really is, does make a mess. I do struggle with this, in all honesty, because we are opening to the public very soon, and that's a big stressor for me when it comes to traffic, which is why we were looking at purchasing this in the first place. So I feel a little put on the spot, I'm very sorry. So I don't really have a full answer. I think if, if, you know, it's a water crisis, I think that's one thing. I think if it's launching a boat, there is other boat launches very close by, one being four kilometers away.
Yeah, that's, that's a fairly straightforward answer. Go ahead, Counsel Pennell.
Thank you for that reply, and I apologize about putting you on the spot. I guess I should have maybe spoke a little bit more and clarified, and I'm more thinking about the water situation. And I'm also thinking now, after listening to you, if, if somebody needs to gain access to the water to gain water, for the wells, or for their, excuse me, for the wells or for their, for their livestock, if they could contact you and make it a better.
Right.
Or something along those lines.
And I think that's, that's fair enough.
We just appreciate anything they can do.
Yeah, especially, I think just with customers coming on site here soon, maybe a pre-arranged would be really appreciated, and then that way we can, we can ensure that there is, safety is not compromised.
Okay, perfect.
Great, great, I thank you very much.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to get into, we've had the public meeting and had, people have been able to put in comments and questions and so on, and so I don't want this to be a back and forth. I think where counsel is headed, and I'm saying this with all due respect, I think where counsel is headed is trying to find a solution that is going to work for everyone. So if you do have a comment, if you want to put it in to the clerk, because I have a feeling what's going to happen is we are going to have a motion come forward that's going to be asking for a whole lot of questions. And if you want some of those questions answered, then I would say that please get them into us. I don't, I don't want to get into where we're arguing over points that we need to look at everything, and this council has looked at absolutely everything. Okay? Counsel McCormack, did you have, did you have a motion you wanted to put forward, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt item number three, recommendation number three.
Okay.
And I think it's important to try and do everything we can to find the best solution for everybody going. I'm sorry that it delays things, but if, if, I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable making a decision in either direction without more information, so that's my recommendation.
Sorry, I'm trying to get number three.
I can help you with that, your worship, as I second it.
Okay.
I will second that counsel defer the decision to the passage of a bylaw to a future meeting, and that we direct staff to obtain more information. Specifically, I think there's a question around the, the legal nature of it, and there's some liability issues and things, and I would support that motion.
Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder. Comments or questions? And what I'd like to be able to do for the people that aren't looking at an agenda in the audience is tell you what number three was, and for some reason, Lord, mine.
I sort of just read it, but I can read it once more if you'd like.
If you would, so that everyone that's here with us and at home will be able to see what it is. Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
Counsel may defer the decision, sorry, so what counsel's looking at, defer the decision to passage of the bylaw to a future meeting, and may direct that more information be obtained. So I just want to make sure that everyone that's here and listening at home, thank you, knows that they can still put in comments or questions. That way, everybody's going to get their, their input in. I just want to check with, with the clerk to see if there's, if there's any timelines that we have to meet, because I don't want to miss them. So Madam Clerk, the procedure from here, if someone wanted to put a comment in, because we have not, we've had the public meeting, we have not made a decision, we've deferred it, referred or deferred to get more information, how can people, what's the best way for people to be able to put in further comments, pro or con?
Through your worship, if people could email me directly, that would be best. And until the matter is decided by counsel, any input we receive will go into forming the staff recommendation. So jaywalters@greaternappany.com, or stopby41dundas, if you have stuff you just want to drop off.
Or if you just even go on the website and go to the directory, you'll see that Jessica's, Jessica's will come up. So that'll be out of this meeting, I'm sure. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I would like to, before we vote on this, I'd like to ask the staff if there's any indication of an expected timeline on when we might see this, will it be at the meeting in July, or would it bump all the way into August, since we only have those two meetings in the next two months? Just, just a suggestion, if could be, just for the benefit of those in the room.
Through your worship, I know that the Winds are particularly concerned about July 15th as their opening date. We will do our best to get this back in a timely manner, but I can't promise that we will get all of the information that we need in time if we have to seek any expert opinions on any of this.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Johnson, then I'm going to call the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I hate to throw a wrench in this, but my concern is it's an unassumed roadway, and as an unassumed roadway, the town is not liable. But people are traveling on private land. Is the town at risk if we give permission for people to travel on private land? And if that takes some research, I appreciate that.
It's, go ahead.
Through your worship, to Counsel John, I would suggest that we seek legal advice on this to make sure that everybody has a clear understanding in terms of rights of passage and whether there's any deemed usage, especially if people have been using it for a long period of time, there may be some statutes in place that we, we may have to uncover. So I would consult with our legal counsel on this one.
And when we consult with them, can we try and get, try and get something out communicated so that everybody knows who's, who's on first? Okay, there's always liability, no matter how we look at it. Any further comments or questions before I call a question? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you very much. On to 12.2, which is the Legislative Services approval of closing and conveying unopened road allowance for Mr. Myatt. Counsel's wishes here.
I'll move staff recommendation on this one, please.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser moving staff recommendation, seconded by Counsel Richardson. Comments, or who, have we lost Counsel Pennell?
No, he declared.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Did you have a comment to make?
No, just moving along, your worship.
Okay. Mover and a seconder, no comments, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. And the last one would be the unopened road allowance for Mr. McCutcheon. Can you have a recommendation before you?
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation? Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. You have a recommendation before you?
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation? Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Council Richardson. Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Council Richardson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to confirm and make a note of that the concerns of Mr. Young should be covered, and if they aren't, I'm sure a clerk will let us know. But it appears as though the concerns of Mr. Young are covered in number seven of the bylaws, so.
Yeah, I think so, but thanks for picking up on that, too. No further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. So with those, the only thing for the people that are in the room, if you wish to leave, there won't be a bylaw that will be passed on the one that has the majority of you here. Please make sure that if you have any comments or questions, we want them to come in so that we can get this decided for you by July, and thank you very much for your interest in this. I'll give you a few minutes to clear the room. Thanks very much, everyone. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break at the same time, please. It is after eight anyway.
Received and received. Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counselor McCormack. I think that it bumped it up from three hundred and twenty-five dollars to nine hundred dollars a property.
Yeah, it was about double for this board what the previous board was.
Yeah. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Correspondence for action, we have none this evening. Unfinished business, Municipal Heritage Committee report, ninety-one, ninety, thirty-three, Highway Thirty-three Crowe Barn dated June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Is this yours? I think it is, Madam Clerk.
Through your worship, this is coming from the Heritage Committee, but I did assist with the report.
Okay.
My apologies, I note the recommendation is not on the agenda. But it is the same recommendation that was at the previous meeting.
Okay, Council's wishes on this, to move it forward. Counselor Richardson, any moving staff recommendation?
Yes, yes, your worship.
Okay. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any comments or questions on it? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. I think I'm back into the right now. Eleven, with activity reports, Community and Corporate Services. Mr. Zatterberg, do you have anything to add to it? No, any questions for Mr. Zatterberg on his, on his report this evening? Oh, sorry. Never lose a page. Committee reports. Ten point one, committee reports, you have a recommendation the council received, the minutes from the Community Development Advisory Committee dated February the eleventh, sorry, February the twentieth, twenty-twenty, and the Municipal Arts and Culture Committee minutes dated March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, moved by.
February thirteenth. Close enough. So moved.
February thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Wow, have we been gone, eh? So moved and corrected by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Nice to see committees back up and going, even if one of them is from twenty-twenty. Now, Madam Clerk, may I go on to the activity reports? Thank you. But thank you for catching me, too. Eleven point one, Community and Corporate, we have been through. Eleven point two, Growth and Expansion. Mr. Nobes, do you have anything you would like to add to your report? Any questions from council directed to Mr. Nobes on his activity report? Seeing none, Emergency Services. Chief, do you have anything you wish to add to yours?
Nothing yet.
No, any questions for the chief on his report? Seeing none, Financial Services. Mr. Dalber is not with us this evening, but our C A O can answer any questions that you would like on that report. No questions this evening? Infrastructure Services.
Counselor Panal.
Oh, sorry. Jeez, and I'm looking right at you. I'm sorry, Counselor Panal.
That's okay. Through you, Madam Mayor, just eleven point four, I noticed on the tax sale reductions, we were used to seeing how much that the tax sales brought in from that, when, sorry, not the tax sales, but the, what the reduction was, there was a dollar value attached to that. I don't see that on this report, I'm just wondering if we're going to see that going forward, or is this the new style of the report?
Through your worship, the Counselor Panal, make sure that those, those numbers reflect the actual value, I think that's of more, more significance in the report, so I'll speak to the Treasurer, G M Finance about that.
Great, thank you very much.
Dave, if I forget to look your way, just holler, please, okay?
Okay.
It's, it'll be easier. One of these days we'll get, get used to this, and I'll be gone. Legislative Services. Madam Clerk, do you have anything that you wish to add? Oh, sorry, Infrastructure Services, holy jumble. Peter, do you have anything you wish to add to it? Nope. Any questions of Peter on this report? Then I will move on to Legislative Services, please. Any questions of Madam Clerk, or Madam Clerk, would you like to add anything to your report? Seeing none, then I will take a, we have a recommendation that council note and receive all activity reports, eleven point one through eleven point six, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor McCormack, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried, thank you. So, we are now skipping to twelve point four, am I right? Yep, twelve point four, Enterprise Fleet Management, and I believe that Mr. Dayfo is going to lead us through this. Thanks, Peter.
Okay, your worship, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Through your worship, basically the report that's in front of you this evening, there's three components to it, there's a staff summary. I'll, I'll be, what I'll do is I'll hit some key points to that, and then I'll be available for any questions. The second component to that, there's an attached PowerPoint presentation from, from Enterprise. So we do have, via Zoom, we have Mr. Chris Lockhart available for any, to answer any questions that you may have on that. And then also attached is the twenty-twenty-two Fleet Rationalization Report that was previously presented to council just for, just for reference, and available for any questions on that. So having said that, I'll, I'll just do a quick overview of what the staff report looks like, with the, with the summary report, rather. But basically, you can see in the staff recommendation, the staff is seeking for, to bring forward a bylaw to get into a service agreement with Enterprise. You can see that the savings are nearly, you know, it's getting close to a half million dollars over a ten-year period, so they're significant. And those savings can be very useful to help us fund heavy fleet and, and other things, and heavy equipment that are underfunded at this given point in time, so. With respect to advantages, there's, there's numerous advantages to going with the, going entering into this agreement. You know, everything from freeing up staff time to, you know, running, you know, addressing the aging fleet that we have, decreasing maintenance costs, fuel costs, there's, there's numerous things that are outlined in that report. And, and then a couple of other things I'll bring to your attention is about that Enterprise would work with local vendors as well, so you know, they would, they would look at local dealerships around to try to do procurement through them, so. Anyways, I guess in closing, before any questions, I would just mention that it's a, you know, there's a ton of benefits and little to no risk on this.
Any questions directed to Peter? Go ahead, Counselor McCormack.
Thank you, your worship, just to touch on the fuel savings for a second, so in, in your assessment, is it strictly because of the shorter life cycle of the vehicles?
Through your worship, yeah, so, you know, as technology changes, the, the fuel economy in vehicles are getting, is greatly improved than, than it was ten years ago. If you remember the fleet presentation that I did on June fourteenth, you know, we just disposed of vehicle that was a nineteen ninety-seven, so if you compare fuel economy to that, to a new vehicle, they're, you know, they're not even comparable, so. Between, between just that new, newer technology, likely smaller motors, more efficient motors, there's that, and then just the age of the vehicle as well, and we'll both contribute to that.
All right, so just add to that, there are a lot of fuel discounts available from different fuel suppliers, so I'm just wondering with Enterprise, is that something as a larger group, is there an advantage there that possibly we can benefit from a fuel saving as a fleet purchaser? Is that something that they offer? And just at the same time, maybe it's something that we could be apprised of down the road as to what our fuel purchase policy is, where, as a matter of interest? Thank you.
Through your worship, I can speak to current operations, so currently our fuel's procured, so there's a, it's, it's almost, I'll call it a rolling tender, so all the field providers are approached on a very regular basis, and for competitive pricing, and that's how the, the fuel is procured. So there are other municipalities that do that, we use it as a model, and there are significant savings in doing that, it keeps everybody's pen sharp, per se. With respect to the, the, the other half of that question is more geared, maybe more geared to Enterprise to, to answer that, if they have that information available.
Okay, thank you. Yep, go, go ahead, sir. I think.
Awesome. Hello, good, good evening, everyone, obviously my name is Chris Lockhart, I really appreciate being here tonight. Long story short, we do have a fuel program, it's on a MasterCard platform through WEX, Fleet Fuel Provider, it's one of the largest fleet fuel providers in North America, it's really just on a MasterCard platform that allows your drivers to access any pump that has MasterCard, so it's accessible for ESO, Shell, Ultramar, Husky, you name it. Most of our municipal and government entities, most of them typically have a, a fuel pump on site, and that's typically how they procure services today, but if you are procuring fuel via gas stations, it is a program that we do provide, it's a MasterCard platform, and all that information would flow into our dashboard for visibility and tracking, if that was something you were interested in, or learning a little bit more in terms of how that would, how that would work.
Okay. Thank, thank you, go ahead, Counselor Panal.
Thank you, worship, through you. Peter, you mentioned that Enterprise would work with local distributors or local suppliers that we have here, how would that work, and does, does Enterprise set up the bid rack for manufacturing?
Through your worship, that's probably a better question for, for Chris to answer.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we definitely work with our, our local dealerships in the municipalities that we partner with, so technically how the process would work today is, we would be working with Greater Napanee and your staff to understand what the vehicle needs are, whether it's a crew cab, half-ton truck, four-by-four, you name it, all, all those specs. From there, once we build that vehicle, we would actually send that vehicle quote in through to a local dealership, such as Peter Boyer Chevrolet is already set up in our program, they're one of our preferred providers already, they would actually be the ones that submit that order through the manufacturer for that vehicle to get built, they still get paid to freight P D I that unit, so that way we can try and funnel as many vehicle deliveries through the local tax base and keep it as local as possible. So we would work with your team internally to build that vehicle, and then use the local dealership to actually place that vehicle and have it land internally in the municipality.
Great, thank you, just a follow-up question, does that work for services as well, or do you have your own on-site service?
Correct, so any type of service, we would be working with any preferred provider that we do have set up already, obviously this dealership being one of them, not only from an acquisition standpoint, the delivery of vehicles, but they would obviously be a, a service provider among many more service-type providers like Jiffy Loops, Great Canadian Oil, those types of shops would also be set up on the program within the local municipality.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor McCormack?
Just one additional question, please, your worship, what's the commitment on, on our behalf with Enterprise if sometime down the road, staff are not satisfied with the program? How do you go about going back to the, the previous system?
Yeah, I'm going to go to the C A O on this, if I could, please.
If I may, your worship, to Counselor McCormack's question, it might be best if, if Chris went through his presentation, and we could probably get through a lot of this stuff.
All right.
And I just wanted to preface that Chris has talked to staff a couple of times, and this is wholeheartedly supported by all of staff, we've gone through and asked a lot of the questions that I think council have asked now and will want to ask in the future. And quite frankly, I think we, we've all said to a person that we would do this even if it didn't save us any money through the efficiency, some of the intangible benefits of, of making sure that we had a professionally managed fleet.
So with that, I'll hand it over to Chris, if that's okay, your worship.
In just one second, if we could, please, was, was your question? Okay, fine, yep, go ahead then. Yep, go ahead, Chris, please, with your presentation.
Not a problem, thank you very much. Really, I mean, high level, I've been working with your staff to really learn everything about what you're currently doing today, how many vehicles you have in fleet, in all the different vehicle classes that you operate, whether it's light duty, medium duty, heavy duty, how long you're currently holding on, holding on to your vehicles for, and, and really understanding what your capital and operating budget is on an annual basis to get a good benchmark estimate how much you typically spend to procure a few vehicles and maintain and fuel them today. Part of our analysis is to put together a ten-year analysis, which is really more just a proof-of-concept model that illustrates what the projected ten-year savings would look like on our program. It's not a commitment of ten years, it's just a long-term strategy to show you that if we split that ten-year analysis into two segments, the first half being a five-year transition, so we know that with your light-duty vehicles, it's not going to be overnight, but to, to, to transition this type of, you know, model, what you're currently doing, onto the Enterprise platform, it's going to take time, so we did a five-year transition, and we had certain replacement criteria for what Enterprise recommended to replace in year one versus year two, three, four, and five, but essentially from there, we actually added on an additional five years post-fully implemented, to show what the true ten-year savings would look like, just kind of buying and selling at the right timeframe over ten years, and that's how we landed on that four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in savings over ten years. But from one of the questions in terms of the commitment, really, once you buy a vehicle, really the only commitment is based on what, what that term of that life cycle is. I mean, at, at any point in time, if you wanted to sell that vehicle or buy that vehicle out, you just buy it and continue running it how you normally would today. Really, at, at the end, if, if you wanted to cut ties, we would, we would cancel the services, the, the maintenance programs that we have, and really at the end of the day, we would really just be more of a, a financial institution for you, until that vehicle is paid off, and then you continue running it how you do today. So there really is no commitment post, what, what you acquire from us, you just don't have to choose to continue to purchase vehicles from us, it's not an exclusive program, you can still procure vehicles in, in any manner as you, as you choose, and that's kind of how each vehicle is set up in its own kind of individual contract, if you will.
Okay. And do you have a presentation?
So Chris, could you run through your presentation quickly now, so that we, we got through that?
Yeah. Let me just kind of share my screen here, sorry. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
So really, mo-most people are probably more familiar with, with Enterprise Rent-A-Car. I'm actually from a, a different division within Enterprise, it's Enterprise Fleet Management. Really, on our side of the business, we actually only work with organizations and entities that own a fleet of vehicles, call it organizations that anywhere from, you know, twenty-five to a hundred and fifty vehicles in their fleet, really, at the end of the day, help them do it for less, just by leveraging the buying power, tools, resources, infrastructure of the world's largest buyer and seller, which is Enterprise. We were awarded a program through L A S, which is now part of Canoe Procurement, which is backed by A M O, to specifically work with municipalities in Ontario, and we've actually seen a large uptick in transition in the amount of folks working with us, just based on the sheer financial and, and operational savings that we're able to bring to the table, because at the end of the day, everything impacts our own bottom line to Enterprise, so we just utilize the strategies and economies of scale for what we do to manage our own fleet, to help folks who have vehicles do it for less, really at the end of the day. The, the, the whole premise of, of our program is designed to help our clients determine, really how long should you hold on to a vehicle for? And we do know that the acquisition price is important when choosing to select a vehicle, but, you know, your money is green at the end of the day, and it's going to be used obviously to fuel the vehicle, it's going to be used to maintain the vehicle, so we look at your three biggest cost buckets in, in owning and operating a fleet of vehicles, and that's depreciation, maintenance, and fuel. And like most municipalities, they go to tender, they determine, you know, a couple of dealerships come back with a, a price and a bid on a pickup truck, or whatever the vehicle class may be, for the most part, whatever is the lowest price, that's the vehicle that the municipality chooses to procure, comes out of their capital budget, as we all know, you buy a new vehicle, you drive it off that dealer's lot, you lose a couple grand, and like, like most folks, they, they try and maximize that value out of that vehicle. On the bottom right-hand side of that orange line, seven, eight, nine, ten years, that vehicle's obviously not worth a whole lot, you know, once it's at the end of its life, you go back, you go to bid for a new vehicle, and that kind of process repeats itself. Maintenance and fuel on the beginning, left-hand side of the graph, as we all know, a brand-new vehicle is the cheapest it's ever going to be to operate, from a, from an operating expense standpoint. Fuel, it's a brand-new engine, maintenance, it's an oil change. Through time, those costs start to increase. So all we do at Enterprise for our own vehicles is we just find the point in time where all three of those costs intersect, and that's, that's where that circle occurs, and that's the most opportune time to get out of that vehicle. For two reasons, from a hard-dollar perspective, it's actually the cheapest time to, to operate that vehicle financially, and the second point is you minimize the day-to-day operating risk of the municipality, because for the most part, you're living on the left-hand side of the graph. You're not subject to maybe more volatility, or something that could be more major from a repair standpoint on the right-hand side of the graph, where now it's going to be down a little bit longer, you're utilizing a mechanic that used to be working on, you know, a sweeper, or a grader, or a transit bus, and now they need to work on the light-duty side, there's just a lot more risk on the right-hand side of the graph. And, I mean, it's funny, at Enterprise, if, if you study total cost of ownership like this, it actually costs near enough the same amount of money to operate a vehicle, but it's just made up of different things at any given point in that vehicle's life. At the beginning stages of that vehicle's life, on the left-hand side of the graph, it's all depreciation and very little operating expenses. On the tail end, it's, it starts to flip-flop, it's all operating and very little depreciation. And the premise of our program is designed, if we're able to be proactive, i-if we know when that sweet spot is, depending on, and any vehicle that we know is going to hit that sweet spot, well now we use our strategy to procure vehicles how Enterprise does, and we help do that for you, where we build your vehicles straight from the manufacturer, we fact or order these vehicles in advance, and typically we're saving anywhere from fifteen hundred to forty-five hundred dollars on the front end, just in the acquisition, by, by being proactive. And what that allows you to do, the, the simple economics behind that method, is allow you, allow you to get ahead of that depreciation curve, because now you're already saving, call it three grand on the front end, where you're already ahead of that curve, and the whole point of our program is now we can get out of that vehicle at the right time, harvest that equity, because we bought that vehicle really well. So if we can buy that vehicle really well, operate it for a reduced amount of time, harvest that equity, and sell it for a lot on the back end, we've now minimized your depreciation. Now if we get out of it a lot sooner, your operating expenses are a little, a lot less as well. If we're able to get out of a half-ton pickup truck maybe every three or four years, where for the most part, it's, it's only just a few oil changes, because most municipalities aren't doing a whole lot of mileage, while you're, you've got very little depreciation, you've got very little operating expenses, that circle for a half-ton pickup truck starts to shift a little bit more to the left-hand side of the graph. A one-ton chassis with thirty or forty thousand dollars worth of aftermarket on the back, that circle may shift a little bit more to the right-hand side of the graph. So what we do at Enterprise for our clients and end-users is we manage each vehicle class independently, depending on what it is and what it's used for, and what we find is those, those, those small tweaks make a really big difference and impact financially long-term. So from there, we use that strategy, and then we, we couple that with how can we help our municipalities do more with less? We know that municipalities are growing, you have utilized your, your capital for projects and initiatives, so how can we utilize that capital? Because there's a cause and effect with capital and operating. So like most municipalities, let's just say it's a, you know, it's a forty-two thousand dollar pickup truck, we add in a back rack, a two-way radio, a deckle, and a strobe, a strobe light, let's just say everything all in, it comes in at forty-five thousand dollars. Like most municipalities, if they've got a, a typical, a, a, a capital budget, sorry, they're procuring and, and writing a check for these vehicles out of their capital budget, in option one, like most municipalities do, they pay cash for that vehicle. They write a check, forty-five thousand dollars in year one, and you own that vehicle. The other option that you could do is you could finance this vehicle, you could spread that forty-five thousand dollars, you spread it over four years, you pay eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year to pay off this forty-five thousand dollar truck, at the end of the four years, you run it, and you don't owe any payments on it. What all of our municipalities do, Loyalist, Kingston, Sudbury, Blue Mountains, Town of Orangeville, is they do what's called option three, or market value finance. Another term for this in our industry is what's called an open-ended equity lease, and it's very different than a traditional dealership lease, like most people think about. So in this example, it's, it's really a finance, but it's down to a book balance, you're only financing a portion of the vehicle, knowing that at a certain point in time, at the right time, you're going to sell that vehicle for a lot more than what you owe in the books. So in this example, option three, you actually would only pay, call it, eight thousand dollars a year. So over four years, you've paid off thirty-two thousand dollars of this forty-five thousand dollar vehicle. So you still owe thirteen grand on that vehicle. But after four years, when we sell that vehicle for twenty-five thousand dollars, that difference is your money, so you still get all the same benefits of ownership, but you just don't have to pay forty-five thousand dollars out the gate, like you traditionally do today in option one, but you can yield the same benefits. And this is where the cause and effect of capital and operating come into play. For an example, if a municipality has a capital budget of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, most, most municipalities, out of their capital year, is we, well, we, we can replace three vehicles this year. If you were to finance this vehicle, you could do twelve in a, in a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar capital budget. With option three, you can now bring in sixteen vehicles for the same capital that you traditionally procure three units. So the, the whole play here is your capital budget technically stays the same, but your operating budget drastically decreases, because now it's thirteen vehicles, that's just an oil change, as opposed to a transmission, or an engine, or something major that could happen in the later stages of that vehicle's life. There's been a lot of information, I do apologize, I, I've got a lot more slides that I can go through, but I'm just going to stop here and kind of open up for any, any, any questions.
Council, questions? Go ahead, Counselor Richardson, and then Counselor McCormack.
Thank you, worship.
Can, can you, sorry, can you drop the slides down so that I can watch for Counselor Panal with some questions? Thank you.
Thank you, worship. It, it's a very novel concept, I, I guess, there are times when we as a council have to delay purchasing vehicles, the money just isn't there sometimes, so sometimes what we have to do is we have to run vehicles out longer than we really want to, because there just isn't, and we've done that over the past two or three years, I know we have. Are there any provisions with this process, should we need to do that, that we can? Or, or, or would we even have to do that with this process? I mean, obviously if we can access more vehicles, but the difficult thing, I think, for us is that we have to balance budgets, and sometimes we've got to steal from Peter to pay Paul in order to make things work. Does this take all of that work away from us to make it easier for us? I guess it's a question.
Yeah, and, and the, the best part about this is really, really simple, if we can procure these vehicles in such a way where we buy them really well, the, the premise is to extract the equity, because we bought that vehicle really well, and now use that to fund the next vehicle. So if you remember those three boxes, option three, it's a forty-five thousand dollar vehicle, you've paid thirty-two thousand dollars of the forty-five, so you owe thirteen thousand, well, when we sell that vehicle for twenty-five or twenty-six, you have thirteen thousand dollars in, in equity. Now if we did that times ten vehicles, at the end of that four years, you've got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in equity that we're generating revenue back to the municipality, that you wouldn't necessarily have today, because you, you, based on how long you currently run the vehicles, that what you start to see is, the fleet literally starts to fund itself by utilizing the equity in the fleet, that thirteen thousand times the X number of vehicles, to fund future purchases. So what you find is you don't have to delay, because you have the ability to sell that vehicle at the right time, generate that revenue back, to then fund the next unit. Hopefully that helps answer your question.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor McCormack?
Thank you, your worship. Well, I would say in the last twenty years of my career, I sold option number three, and that's how I earned my living, and I even think that when I first came onto council, we had a discussion about why the town wasn't considering leasing at the time, and this is kind of a twist on an open-end lease, even though it's a finance, and I think it's a great program, and it's going to be beneficial to the municipality, for sure. Is the ownership in Enterprise or in the municipality's name?
Yeah, so the title, so Enterprise would be the lessor, we own the title, all the plates, registrations, that would be owned by the Town of Greater Napanee. So everything is plated and registered, we would be using the Town of Greater Napanee's R I B number to, to plate and register these vehicles in your name.
Okay, great, so insurance-wise, going back forty years in the car business, when leasing started to, to come about strongly, one of the benefits if you had a vehicle to come about strongly, one of the benefits, if you had a vehicle that was owned by a major corporation like Enterprise, you had additional insurance. So this is, I would suggest this most probably, because you're the owner of the vehicle, and therefore, you're liable, so your corporation has insurance, which would help the municipality in a major claim, because we're not the owners. So am I right on that?
You would, technically, you're not the owners, yes, from an insurance standpoint, you would still insure these vehicles as if it's your insurance policy.
Correct.
So nothing would change from an insurance policy, you would still register these, whether it's a fleet automatic policy or a scheduled policy, you would still insure these as you traditionally do today.
Okay, I don't want to bore anybody, but when a million dollars coverage was standard, and the vehicle was owned, let's say, by Ford Motor Company, because it was one of their leases, and it was a two-million-dollar claim, Ford Motor Company's insurance covered the balance, because it was their vehicle. So I'm just suggesting that there might be, you know, an additional benefit to your program, because you are the owner of the vehicles, therefore, your coverage would, in a real huge claim, anyways, I'm going to stop now, but I like the program.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and then I'll go to you, Counsel Pinnell.
Thank you, Your Worship. So in not-too-distant past years, we've had situations where we've purchased vehicles in the spring, and then disposed the outgoing vehicle in the fall to make use of additional vehicles for the summertime with extra staff, students. How does the lease program support, or how does this program support that type of planning?
For sure, and essentially, what happens is, should the town choose to work with Enterprise, you would have access to an actual dedicated accounting that would be working with your staff. We would actually be meeting on somewhat like a quarterly basis and projecting future needs, both obviously short and long-term, well in advance. We work with a lot of folks that have seasonal businesses, and I mean, there's a couple of ways to operate a vehicle. You could either buy it, you could either rent it, or you could either clung or reimburse for it. What a lot of our folks do, and some of the recommendations that we do, is we want to find the most cost advantageous plan for you, that's seamless, and it's going to save you the most amount of money long-term. Some of our folks, we will, if we know that you influx seasonal staff, starting in April, that lasts from April till September, well, we may look to procure a vehicle, instead of renting a vehicle at eighteen hundred dollars, or whatever that is today, we may procure and acquire a vehicle for you in April, make this recommendation, where you buy a vehicle, you run it for six months, and at the end of that six months, we may sell it for you. And the best part about that is, because we're still able to buy that vehicle really well, you could almost run it for six months and sell it for the same amount of money than you bought it for. So there's a couple of things that we can really do, depending on whether it's, you know, what the utilization of that vehicle's going to look like, to help present the best plan moving forward, because we know that it may not be, you know, twelve months, ten years, that that vehicle's going to be on the road for, that it could have short periods of time where we can make that recommendation, what's the right option in plan of attack that we can help go for, build for you.
Thank you, I had a follow-up.
Go ahead.
What vehicle classes are we looking at? Up to light-duty vehicles, up to medium-duty pickup trucks? What coverage of the fleet is part of this plan?
Let me just quickly share my screen, if I go back to this one here. This is anything really up to an F-550 dump body and down. So we removed the Euro Internationals, anything heavy-duty, this is mostly kind of the lighter-duty and some of the lighter chassis's that we would help facilitate manage.
Okay, and I guess, just to tweak on that, trailer towing isn't an issue in any of these vehicles?
No, these are, you use these vehicles how you normally would today, nothing would change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I know that you're underneath there, Counsel Pinnell, you go ahead, please.
Thank you, Worship, through you, Chris. As we, as the vehicle comes closer into that circle, or becomes into that circle, and it's time to dispose of the vehicle, tell me how that would work? Would we just, would you take care of all of that, or is it the Town of Greater Napanee looks after disposing that vehicle? And the second part of that question is, is there a predetermined price that that vehicle would be worth inside of that circle?
Great, great question. First point, we take care of it. So full service, we deliver these vehicles, turnkey ready to work, back racks, you name it, whatever these vehicles need, deckles, they're landed at your office, ready to go. When we land a vehicle, ready to work, we obviously pick up its replacement vehicle, we have an entire team at Enterprise whose only job is to sell vehicles, they don't know if it's a Town of Greater Napanee vehicle, one of our commercial contractors' vehicles, an Enterprise vehicle, all they know is they've got to sell this vehicle for the most amount of money possible. We know that ninety-nine percent of the folks that we work with on this side of the business that I work in are municipalities or contractors. They're work trucks, they back into a puller or two, they don't dust their feet off, we take a very conservative, sorry, this is point number two, we take a very conservative estimate on what this vehicle's going to come back from a resale standpoint, knowing that it may have a scratch, or it may have a ding. We use the Canadian Black Books Rough Condition Wholesale Index to determine what a vehicle should sell for, after a certain, you know, a three-year timeframe with seventy-five-thousand kilometers on it, we take a certain percentage off of that rough condition, knowing the type of work that our clients are in. So we don't guarantee that price, or that resale value, sorry, we're just very conservative. Obviously, anything over and above that is all your money.
Any further questions? Go ahead, sorry, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I've leased vehicles before, so I certainly understand the benefits of working through that program. Who is responsible for the maintenance on these vehicles? Can we do the maintenance in-house, or does it have to go to specific garages?
Yeah, great, great question. So we actually have a program, it's called our Full Maintenance Program, really just makes it very simpler, very simple and easy for you to manage the maintenance. We would be monitoring and tracking all the mileage trends, and sending notifications and alerts when vehicles are required to go in for service. Obviously, at the end of the day, it would be the onus of the town and the staff to take these vehicles into the shop, to get the oil changes done and the preventative maintenance. We actually have a lot of the great Canadian oil changes that I talked about, the Chevrolet dealerships, they would be and are already set up on our network for services. So whenever the services are acquired, you can actually go into one of these preferred vendors, you get the oil changes, and whatever that repair is required completed, all that repair history that flows into our website dashboard for visibility, tracking, reporting that we bring to you, and all of the things are all kind of housed, all under one umbrella, is how that would work.
One more, Mayor, please.
Certainly. Okay. And as technology changes, one of the discussions, or one of the points that was brought up earlier, was vehicles get to be, get better gas mileage. And I'm not speaking in this question with regards to pickup trucks, but with the smaller vehicles, we don't have a lot of them, but we do have a few. Looking at the future, can you see electric cars coming into that option of possibility?
Absolutely. We know that the wave is coming, right? It's probably coming faster than probably a lot of people had envisioned. We actually work with a telematics provider out of Oakville, called Geotab, it's a very large telematics GPS tracking program globally. We actually ran a case study on ninety-three thousand vehicles that Enterprise owns and operates, and it talks about the, on all of these different vehicle classes, you know, what percentage could be converted to an electric vehicle today? What's one year out, what's, you know, three years out, what are the infrastructure costs, what are the impacts on carbon, neutralizing your carbon impact? It's actually a really cool case study and article. We know that it is coming, we're starting to implement these types of EVs where applicable in our fleet, and as we collect these data points, we then, in turn, make the recommendations for our clients to get ahead of that curve and implement those technologies when it makes financial sense. EVs, especially in that SUV and compact sedan-type space, obviously, the pickup trucks might not be there yet, electric vehicle is definitely an option, and because we work with all manufacturers, it is something that we can provide. We would just want to have a better understanding of kind of what the vehicle's used for, where it's going to be housed and charged, what the radius is, obviously, to make the most impactful recommendations for you.
That's excellent, thank you.
Any further questions from counsel? Go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
Thank you, Worship, and I think I know the answer to this question, and it might not be a fair question for Chris, but I'll ask him, and anybody else can weigh in. Is there any other companies or corporations that have the ability to be able to provide this service to a municipality such as ours?
Do other companies that do fleet management? Yes, for sure. Enterprise is the only awarded municipal provider for entities in Ontario. And one of the reasons why is, believe it or not, we're actually the only fleet management company that owns a fleet. Everything impacts our own bottom line. So just given our economies of scale and what we do for ourselves every day, has just allowed us to be the expert in this space, not only to help drive down clients' annual costs, but help them make recommendations, how we can help them stay within budget, and operate their fleet more efficiently, is one of the reasons why LAS, Canoe Procurement, and AMO has backed this program, and has only awarded Enterprise Fleet Management to perform these services for municipalities.
Yep, great, thank you.
So counsel, the other report that's attached to that, of course, is the report that we had for the June fourteenth presentation. So Peter, unless there was anything you wanted to add to this, or we do have a recommendation before us, staff recommendation, Counsel McCormack?
Yes, Your Worship.
Moving for staff recommendation, seconded by Counsel Norrie. Any further comments or questions?
I just want to say, great job for everybody that was involved, I mean, it's a good program. I think we're on the right track. Just more good news for the municipality.
That's right. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, and thanks, Peter, thanks for all the work for everybody, thanks very much, Chris.
Thanks for asking.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
On to twelve point five, financial services, our municipal asset management plan. So Paul is not with us this evening, but we do have our CAO who can maybe start this off, and we'll get going in the direction, and we also have a presentation from the asset management people that are helping us.
So, thank you, Your Worship, if I may, just a couple of notes, this is very, we're going to approach this very similar to what we did with the fleet management piece, there is an accompanying staff report. So in Paul's absence, what I want to say, you know, there's a requirement here to be compliant with regulations in terms of, you know, getting our house in order and doing the asset management plan. You know, this, that's a heavy read, a hundred-and-thirty-some-odd pages, even as an accountant, I had to sort of prop my eyelids open to keep reading that. There are some big scary numbers in there, I would suggest that, you know, any municipality that can stand up and say, we've got asset management licked, they're probably lying. I think what I want to emphasize with counsel, this is the start of a process for staff to make sure we have good visibility on our assets, we understand how to manage them, and that we can provide clear advice to counsel in the long-term, how we're managing these assets. I think, you know, a couple of examples is, what we're doing with fleet is an example of taking a long-term approach to assets, our vehicle assets, and I think later on tonight, when we get into the potential purchase of administration buildings, and what we're doing with our other real property infrastructures, we're taking a long-term view as well. So we've got Elio here that's going to give this presentation, try and boil it down to sort of a thirty-thousand-foot view in terms of what asset management means to the municipality. I would also like to thank, in a public setting, all of the staff that did the work on this. This has been a tremendous effort over the last, I think, six months in terms of collecting this data, the work's not over yet, but, you know, we have to make data-driven decisions on this, and we're getting close to it. So that's enough for me, I'll let Elio carry on with his presentation in terms of the asset management plan.
Thank you, welcome, and you go ahead, please.
Thank you, so should I share my screen, or do you have it?
No.
Already.
No, you can go ahead and share the screen, thank you.
Absolutely, and how much time do I have? Because I was advised I only had, have like five minutes to present, so I just want to make sure.
I said five, Elio, so that you could actually take ten, but I would stay at a high level for counsel in this presentation.
Oh, absolutely, and you really had the new explanation, so I hope that I'll be done in ten minutes. So I'll start by sharing my screen, just give me a second here. All right, just making sure that you can see it now?
Yes.
So, Eddie Abraham, Asset Management Consultative, I'm not going to waste a sign to introduce myself or jump right into the content, so we're going to be covering what is asset management in a concise manner, we're going to have an overview on the like five-eight-eight-seventeen requirements set by the Province of Ontario. We're going to discuss some of the findings of this asset management plan, and some of the key recommendations, and we'll end with some theoretical discussion about levels of service for the next iterations of the asset management plan. So assets are usually conduits of services, and this is how I typically write to start similar presentations, because if these assets weren't providing services, they wouldn't have any functionality utility, and therefore, they would be useless. So the transportation service would use the roads, bike lanes, not whatever else, it's backbone, so it's very key to take into account that whenever we're dealing with asset management, it's actually service management, because these assets are meant to provide services and... In terms of the OREG regulation, the Province has really split this down into four key milestones. The first one was an asset management policy development that was due in 2019, followed by two asset management plans, which are the key focus of today's presentation. One is for core assets, so that's due in 2022, and the other one is for core and non-core. And basically, this asset management, or these two asset management plans, which are represented under one in this case, are really focused on the current levels of service, and what is basically required from a lifecycle management point of view, or a performance point of view, to meet these current levels of service. We also studied, or studied the impact of growth on these levels of service, in order to set the tone for the final iteration of these asset management plans, which would tackle the proposed levels of service. So moving forward in 2024, that's kind of due in 2025, the municipalities and Ontario would have to start thinking about their proposed levels of service, and what do they want to achieve in terms of desirable proposed levels of service, and how to get there. From a lifecycle management point of view, so managing the assets over the lifecycle, from operations, maintenance, rehab, and replacement, and also what cost implications would this bring to the table? And how should we adjust the proposed levels of service in order to get to the right balance between risk, cost, and performance? And these asset management plans also include some discussion or some potential impacts of growth on the long-term requirements and the proposed levels of service. So this asset management plan is basically based on 2020-year-end data from tangible capital assets point of view. In order to develop it, we looked at a few key elements, so we asked ourselves a few key questions. So what is the current state of municipal infrastructure, or in other terms, what is the current condition of your assets? What process improvements can increase confidence in analysis and decision-making? So what data set could be utilized to better be used as decision-making indicators or decision-making attributes? So a few sets that I can list would be replacement costs, so what are the most accurate replacement costs of the assets? And we did revise this in this asset management plan. What's the average annual daily traffic on some roads? What are the pipe diameters? What are the pipe materials in some areas? So these are very important considerations to kind of help us in moving forward and making some informed decisions by prioritizing investments in assets. Another key consideration is what is the municipality's financial capacity to meet long-term requirements? And we did this by basically looking at, and with the best available data, by the way, looking at the annual requirements to provide the current levels of service versus the capital available, or the capital funding available. And the capital funding available only focused on sustainable sources of revenues, that would be gas tax, oil, and property taxes as well. The Province really considers everything that's more than three years in a row, a sustainable source of revenue, everything that doesn't meet this criteria is not considered a sustainable source of revenue. So one-time grants and all of these good stuff that really help municipalities in producing capital projects, and doing all of this, all of this good work, are not included in this analysis as... as they are not considered sustainable sources of revenue. Now, back to the actual content of the plan itself. The total asset portfolio in this case is about $488 million, which is quite significant. As you can see here, the road network has the biggest value, followed by buildings and facilities, water networks, sanitary networks, bridges and culverts, storming, what's on, what's so forth. If we translate this to a number per household, the replacement cost of your total infrastructure portfolio would be about $65,000 per household, which is quite significant. And people usually tend, or residents usually tend to ignore the fact or to forget about the fact that for them to live in a place, there should be services and there should be infrastructure assets that are enabling these services. Because without roads, without water, without sanitary systems, life would be basically impossible. In terms of the condition of your assets, about 59% of these assets are in fair or better condition, which is a good indication, probably in the normal average for most municipalities that I've worked with in my life. However, a few caveats to this story are that some of this data is not based on actual assessments, which is fine for now. And this is why the province has really allowed the municipalities some time to develop these plans and did them in kind of an iteration process or like in phases. So for most assets or for relevant assets such as roads, we had some really good asset data, bridges and culverts as well, facilities as well, because we recently completed a building condition index study, which really helped in actually incorporating the most recent costs into the study. However, for some buried infrastructures such as the water mains, the sanitary mains, and what's on, what's so forth, the condition data was not, the assessed condition data, frankly, was not available for these assets. So we ended up using HSpace, which is not the most accurate condition assessment technique, but whenever data becomes available, this data should be included in the plan and then the plan should be devised, because this would reflect the actual condition of assets in a more robust way. So I guess in that, that's one of the scary graphs. So this graph actually looks at the annual capital requirements from a capital perspective that are required to maintain the current levels of service. And it's about $15.1 million. This takes into account rehab, replacement, and all the capital activities required over the life cycle of a certain asset. And as you can see, it does fluctuate to a certain extent and the lines here are presented in highlighted brackets, so just to keep more space into the graph. So after we've done this analysis and we came up with these numbers required to maintain the current levels of service, we compared them to the actual funding available. So again, looking at taxes, gas tax, wholesale, and what's on, what's so forth. And for tax-funded assets, the deficit was about $10.1 million. If I look at the rate-funded assets, so water and sanitary, it's about $1 million. So this being said, and putting aside the one-time grants, if you were to reach a sustainable funding level, and that's a theoretical kind of math equation, for the tax-funded assets, you would have to increase your taxes by 2.8% over the period of 20 years. For water assets, it would be 1.8% over 15 years. And for sanitary assets, it would be around 1.2% over 10 years. Again, this is based on the best available data from a condition perspective, from an asset portfolio perspective, and also this is not taking into account one-time off grants or funding that is not considered sustainable by the province. So these numbers, we can think about them as theoretical numbers to a certain extent, because these one-time grants and these funding from multiple layers of government would continue to exist. And this asset management plan is kind of a way for municipalities to show their actual needs, so that the province can, or the federal government, compare apples to apples. So if there's a deficit, this is not necessarily a bad indication, because the numbers are correct and there's some good evidence behind this. This is actually a good comment for some of the business cases for funding later on. We do recommend that whenever you look at increasing the taxes or doing what's ever, you always keep in mind that there should be some project prioritization based on risk and based on some of the attributes or the critical criterias present in the plan, so that you can decide what assets are more critical compared to other assets in a scientific way. In terms of key recommendations, we do recommend that you continue to refine your inventory as much as possible for core, non-core assets, especially the buried infrastructures such as the mains and what's on, what's so forth. And another key consideration is to continue to evaluate life cycle management strategies, looking at the impacts and looking at the triggers and the actual cost of these activities and incorporating them into future plans, so that your numbers will remain accurate or become more accurate at the time. In terms of levels of service, we do also recommend that you keep on focusing on collecting current levels of service, because this would be the foundation for the proposed levels of service. And this would serve for the gap analysis that would help you define what life cycle management strategies are required and what are the associated costs of these activities. Last but not least, we also recommend that you look at the growth component and integrate that into your asset management planning moving forward, because for the 2025 requirements, you would have to quantify the impact of growth on the proposed levels of service and your service delivery in general. Finally, in terms of defining the proposed levels of service, a key equation should always be taken into account, a balance between cost, performance, and risk in providing levels of service. So what's the cost that is tolerable to a certain extent? And what are the performance levels that are within the desired range? And what's the risk tolerance of the municipality? All of these questions should be answered in one place, which is the asset management plan, in order to start the discussion about the proposed or the desired levels of service for later requirements. Two minutes over. I do apologize, I tried my best, but I'll open up with full foot some questions.
Thank you. Questions from counsel? Go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
Not really a question, but a statement. But I'm glad that Mr. Pinson prefaced this as being scary right off the bat, because according to my math, it's 5.8% annually, which really isn't sustainable. So, but, um, thank you for that.
If I may, and Elio may help me out here, but I think what this does more than anything else, and I would suspect, you know, with this senior leadership team, this is something we would do regardless of whether there was a provincial legislation to do it, because that's how you manage assets when you've got 400 some odd million dollars worth of assets, is understanding how you move forward. I think the biggest thing in this thing is it gives you the ability now to start making choices around what's important, because you understand what the long-term costs are. Before, you know, you'd have peaks and valleys and you'd spend money when it became available. Now you start to have to make hard decisions in terms of what's more important, what the long-term costs are of these assets. Yeah, so, I didn't mean to scare you. But I think, you know, any counsel that gets this at the first time is there's where you swallow hard and say, "We have to start taking long-term approaches to how we actually spend taxpayers' money on assets."
If I may jump in here with a small note. Typically, the annual capital requirements for municipalities across Canada vary between 2.5% to 3.5%. And the better the data, the higher the number. Because typically municipalities, they don't know what they basically owned. And I'm seeing more numbers in the 3.5% to 4% investment rates compared to the replacement cost of the portfolio. So greater than any does fall within this range. And this is actually a good indication, not a bad indication. This means that your data maturity is probably better than some other municipalities. The gap is big, but it's countrywide.
Go ahead. I think I had Counsel, or Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and then I'll go to you, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Worship. One of the slides around the financial strategy talked about the annual tax rate change. For the water and sanitary, that's really about the user rate fees, not on the tax base, though. So it's not a blanket wide tax rate increase. It's really, but we were already moving in that direction in town, weren't we? Where we were trying to get to a point where the user rates were making it sustainable. I realize we got the big project coming, but still, the goal was to make it sustainable on the user rates already, wasn't it?
Yes. I think you want to answer. Yes, okay.
Yeah, okay. It just, I draw attention to that, because it takes 3% off of the tax base and puts it on the user rates, where it really belongs on that asset, because about half the population doesn't use that, and that's why it's user-based, whereas it's really a 2.8% tax rate change.
And normally through fund accounting, you fund each one. You fund general operations different than you do utilities, right? And utilities should be funding itself even with the contribution to reserves.
Okay, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, number one, thank you for the presentation. For the people who are looking at this, and as our CEO kindly said, the numbers look scary. On page six is the first indication of the categories that are involved in this. It's not just trucks and buildings. There's also roads and bridges and sanitary, stormwater, and parks and land improvement. This is everything that the town owns, so that it's a good place for people to live. So it's nice to see a comprehensive analysis of that. And I really like the key recommendations you make at the end, because this is a living document and it's constantly changing. And it's meant to teach us where we're going with some of our spending. And thank you.
Okay. Anything further from counsel? No further questions. You do have a recommendation that counsel received for information in the updated asset management plan. And further, that counsel approved the asset management plan as presented. Moved by Counsel Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Elio.
Thanks for having me. You guys have a good night.
Thank you, you too. See, 12.6, CAO 99 Advance Avenue Financing.
Thank you, Worship. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the financing and general approach. And Brant is here if there are any questions around real property infrastructure. I think realistically, this approach is more about how we are going to manage infrastructure, real property infrastructure in the future than it is about, you know, specific numbers. We've talked about in council before, I think it was whether it's the triad or the trifecta. You know, what we're really looking at is, you know, what we spend on administration building, what we do to this town hall and its rejuvenation, rehabilitation, and repurposing with, you know, with the council chambers on the main floor, what we do on our council chambers here and what we do on the main floor. And then thirdly is what we do with the Strathcona Paper Centre, especially in a year and a bit when that mortgage is due, and how we reinvest potentially those monies into what we're starting to call recreation capital. So realistically, that's how I'd like to frame what this is. There's many different ways of, you know, looking at monies in and monies out in terms of the affordability of this building. What we've decided to do is try and present it as simple as possible in terms of, we've always talked about the million dollars that was earmarked in reserves from previous sales towards the administration building. And I think it's important here as well that it's an administration building. It is not the town hall in the building in which we're sitting right now. So it is the administration building. We are also looking at some potential, and Brant's listed them, some potential sales of what we would call either redundant or non-necessary infrastructure that we would contribute to the purchase of this building. There are some in here, which I think counsel are going to have to make some decisions on. Probably the most, the one that we're looking at, you know, the most certain is that of 45 Commercial Court, which is an easy one once growth and expansion and infrastructure moves out of that building. So what we've looked at is revenues from, or monies from the reserve, sales, and then funding the remainder, basically from reserves and paying it back as opposed to a debenture, and then a small debenture. You know, there are different ways we could have done this. We could have done a straight debenture for all of it and taken some of the money from other sales and put it different places. But I think this is the most balanced approach of making sure that we identify where some of those monies are going. And what we've done is you see a 10-year debenture cost of $190,000. I recognize there are a lot more numbers that you can throw into this in terms of what I would call opportunity savings and not rehabilitating or not putting money into buildings that we're potentially going to sell. But you'd get into a rather complex business case. I suffice it to state that I think the numbers on the surface make sense at $5.8 million all up, considering the alternatives of, you know. We are basically busting at the seams right now. We're actually delaying staffing, because we don't have places for people to sit. So to move in with a targeted date of 1 October, pending provincial approval of this sale or the purchase, and then making sure that when we potentially move into 99 Advance, we are poised to move in with all of the necessary process equipment and people know where they're sitting, so that we can actually improve our customer service for the residents in that area. So that's all I have in terms of, I guess, a high level and some detailed numbers around this. I'm happy to answer any questions in terms of the numbers in Paul's absence or if there are any questions in relation to some of the infrastructure we're talking about. Brent Brant would be happy to answer those questions.
Counsel, Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
I have a question and then some comments. The first question is, to the CAO, if, considering 99 Advance, what does that do for the, what is the capacity of the building in terms of our staffing complement? How, like, the question was asked, are we going to fill the building right off the bat? Is there any room for growth? And I know there's a tenant in there now, and what are the implications there?
So Brant can give you the detailed numbers. There are actually a couple of tenants in there right now. Family Child Services will be staying. The Public Health Unit is in there and will be staying, as is the Maltby Centre. So Brant's done the analysis with the architects who did space analysis for this building as well. We've got, you know, how many bums in seats, and there is some room for growth. That being said, those other three organizations basically are there day to day. So we're not, they will not grow, because we will be the landlord and we'll control that. But it's likely that we'll get space. Rest assured, there is no intent of any senior staff here to come looking for counsel in the near future, looking for more space for administration staff. That's for sure. So Brant, can you answer the question in terms of the numbers?
Yes, Your Worship. There's 78 workstations in the building now, and we require about 40 to 45 of those. So there's room for growth.
Okay. And that's, I'm pleased to hear that. You know, not to compare apples and oranges, but in the past, we've seen schools opened and then immediately needing additional space, because they built for today, not for tomorrow. And so I'm just thinking ahead and seeing that this is not only a smart acquisition financially, but we're looking, we've got room to grow, should we need to. And that comes to my comment, where I just want to recognize that not only do we find this, but we reacted to it and acquired a building that's effectively about a $12 million value, and we got it for half price or less. And I came up with a good strategy, a simple strategy, and a more than affordable strategy to afford it. Obviously, I agree fully with the 45 Commercial Court disposition. That, I mean, that was a building that served a purpose, but would have zero purpose for us going forward, and there's no attachment to it. There's no historical value to it or anything. And I want to echo once again, we never seem to want to leave this one behind. The building we're sitting in, the current town hall is, we're absolutely committed to keeping it long-term going forward, and it'll become a usable public space in the not-too-distant future. So those are the only comments I wanted to make in total support of this.
Counsel McCormack.
Thank you, Worship. The three tenants that will remain in the building, are they all revenue-generating tenants?
The Maltby Centre and Public Health, yes. We have offered lease abatement for Family and Child Services. We have offered lease abatement for Family and Child Services as part of the acquisition cost.
For a term of?
Ten years.
So with forty-four required seats and the availability of seventy-eight, I think you mentioned, would we entertain another tenant of some sort to generate more revenue?
So at this point, with the three potential tenants that are there now, plus ourselves, there, we, we would need, we wouldn't need to take on more tenants. That would be enough to fill the spaces.
Well, just after hearing the report on asset management and the, the large amount of money that we seem to have to come up with, I think any kind of, I mean, we're going with enterprise, we're going to save about forty thousand dollars a year in fleet management, which is great news, but that's not going to really do much.
So, so if I may, through your worship, the council requirement, one of the issues is when we move into that building, we're going to have to start looking at the segregation of staffs, right? So you've got municipal staff, and we're going to make sure that the other staffs are basically behind locked doors. So we would want to make sure if we were to take on any tenants, that they were either complimentary or we didn't mind having those staffs in with, with municipal staff. So that would be a consideration. But I think at the end of the day, what we're looking for is a place that we can live in long-term, and we don't want to jeopardize running out of space for the sake of getting a couple of bucks in revenue. But, you know, it's, it's obviously going to be a, not a concern, but something we'll keep top of mind as, as we progress.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question. I see Dave, or Counsel Penal split up his hand, but just on the point we're just on. Brant, you said forty-four versus seventy-eight, but the tenants make up the balance? So the building's full with the tenants? Or the seventy-eight are exclusive of the current tenants?
No, the seventy-eight is the total number of workstations.
Including all tenant spaces?
All four of us.
So with all, the building's full effectively with town staff and tenants, essentially?
Yes.
Okay, clarifying.
Counsel Penal?
That was exactly my question, thank you.
Counsel Richardson?
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to echo the, the comments of the deputy mayor. I'm in support of this. I, I think this venture is, is a long overdue and well-needed venture. I like what I see in this report with respect to how we're going to pay for it. We're going to dissolve some properties that really aren't hauling the mail. We, we, I think we need to, to do that. What really makes me excited is the fact that we're going to dissolve some properties in the market square, and that money, after putting, put into reserves, are going to be put into this building, which is, is in dire need of some love and attention. And I think we need to bring this building back to the majestic building that it is, and that excites me. The only question I really do have on this is, is why are we going to hold off selling forty-five Commercial Court until the end of 2023? I would think that we may want to get it on the market prior to that. Other than that, I'm, I'm in full support of the, of the report.
Right.
Your, your worship, that coincides with the construction project for the water treatment plant. So as part of that construction is the, the utility garage, the, the work place at the back of forty-five, those will, those will be down on Water Street. So until that building is ready to go, we will need forty-five for utilities for their equipment.
Okay, I was, I fully expected there would be a reason. It's just, like I say, I would like to see it on the market sooner than later, but I think we need to take advantage of that. But, I mean, other than that, I, I really see a balanced approach as to how we're going to do this. And, and it's scary, but I think it's a necessary evil. And just as an aside, I was part of a, part of a committee with the Cataract Way Conservation, and we're doing the exact same thing there. We're trying to find some administrative space for their administration. And we, we weighed a lot of different options, including trying to build right on their property there, and it just, it just wasn't functional or feasible. And, and, and we, what we've ended up doing is, is getting into a, an agreement with the County of Frontenac and then providing some administrative space. And what the worry was, was that we would lose the feel of who we are at the, at the Cataract Conservation. But that's not what would happen. It's just simply a, an administrative building, which is what we're looking at here with ninety-nine advance. It, it's a building that houses the people we need to manage the corporation. Town Hall will be town hall, has been town hall, and will always be town hall. Were decisions on how the corporation is going to be run, and, and will always be, hopefully, for another hundred and sixty or seventy years. So I just wanted to say that, that I, I think this is a good plan.
If, if I may, your worship, one of the things that, that Brant and I've talked about is, you know, the exit from this building of staff will not represent an abandonment of this building. So we are quickly looking at what can we do to the main floor to make it usable either for community groups, not-for-profit organizations? But the view is, you know, when, when the eight staff leave here, this can't be, you know, closing doors, shuttering, that we'll find a use for this and making sure that we, we start that plan of how we modernize this building.
Anything further from counsel? Yes, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
When I sat on the Cataract Region Conservation Authority Board four years ago, we had spent about two years talking about a new admin building then and toured many sites. By a refreshing contrast, this happened relatively quickly, which it had to because of the nature of the beast, but it's kind of nice to see government move, move at this pace once in a while.
Go ahead, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support this plan. I think it is well thought out, and it will allow the staff to continue with the business of running this community in the best way moving forward. They keep on being downloaded by more and more rules and regulations from upper government, and there has to be, they need the ability to fill those requirements. And I think everybody in this room, and even the ones who aren't here, certainly respect the history in this building, aren't excited about seeing it be repaired and restored and become something more valuable to the community.
I could see your hand up in two places. Go, go ahead, Counsel Penal.
Thank you, Mayor, with you. John, you've mentioned that we're still waiting for provincial approval on this. Is there any idea as to what kind of timeline that we're looking at? My concern is that a plan about go for first for move-in, that's coming, that date's coming faster than what you think.
Through your worship, to Counsel Penal, yeah, when you look at the work that needs to be done in terms of the plan for that move, I just got a note from Family Child Services this evening. They have not had contact from the province. Good news is with, with no change in government and the same minister being in place, we've also reached out to our local MPP to ask his assistance in terms of making sure that the minister can, can sign off on this relatively quickly. The bureaucrats in both organizations, you know, all support this, so I don't see that being an issue, it's just a matter of getting a signature on a piece of paper.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to what Mr. Pinson has, has just said, the, the seed was planted as soon as possible, just for a heads up, and I know that our MPP, Brizzy, had made some contact before, and, and certainly will work on it now. It's, it's on the front of his desk, and we, we, as a, as a group, will make sure that it stays there. Counsel, your wishes.
Staff rec.
Staff recommendation by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counsel McCormack. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion. Motion is carried. Thank you, staff. Thank you. Thank you, counsel, and this is a huge, huge move forward. Twelve point seven, CAO strategic plan update number five.
Thank you, worship. Before I get into this, and I did say this in closed session, I would like to thank counsel for the decision to approve the purchase of ninety-nine advance avenue. I think it makes a tremendous impact on staff and the efficiency for the municipality. That being said, very quickly, I promised an update every month. We did have the training session with the consultant, I think, a couple of weeks ago. We met with them again today, senior leadership team met with them. I know there were some, there was some difficult conversations we met in closed sessions, sort of some of the training, but I think there was a lot gleaned from that, and we've taken another cut at the strategic plan, diving into a little bit more details. We're on track for a, for a presentation to council, I believe it's in August, and I think we'll have something that, that we can use moving forward in terms of a strategic plan.
Questions directed to the CAO on the report? Seeing none, I would take a motion to note and receive, please. Counsel McCormack, Counsel Richardson, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Infrastructure services. Harrington Lane Bridge update. Before we start, I know we're going to go past it so we don't get in the middle of something. I'll take a motion to go beyond ten o'clock. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counsel McCormack, all in favor of that motion. Motion is carried. Thank you. Go ahead, Peter, please.
Through your worship, I'll just take a minute and go through at a high level just the three options. So option one is, is, you know, it's already in the books as a council resolution to proceed with that. We, during the land sale and the negotiations, one of the stumbling blocks was providing a load rating for the bridge. And then the subsequent conversations that occurred after that is the risk of additional engineering's required, and that's no guarantee that, that the load rating will be high sufficient to still broker that deal. So there's risks there. There's other risks involved with constructability, and, and, you know, at the end of the day, too, it's, it's a sale of, of land to, you know, a single owner, and there's a significant amount of risk where things get out of control in a hurry. So I'll give a couple of examples. Worst-case scenario, you, you spend the money, you do the engineering, you, you, it comes back at a satisfactory number, you proceed. Construction risk is such that if something happens to the abutments, if you find, because we don't have geotech right in the approach area up to the abutments, if there's a lot of concrete that's been poured there years ago, or large boulders and stuff like that, if we disturb the abutments to the point where it's non-reparable, the bridge has to be pulled out. So then we have a, a deal, we have a deal, a signed deal that we can't follow through with. So there's risk with that. And, and, you know, the, the concern at the staff level is we haven't, you know, the, the land deal had to be brokered first before we could put in place in the order for all the materials and parts to, to, to actually do the work. So that, none of that stuff has been placed. As soon as the red flag started coming up with potentially escalating costs, we stopped, reviewed different options. So that's, that's option one. Staffs, we're a little leery about that one just because there, there's significant risk for that. So number, option number two is, is geared towards an in-house solution. So if council's looking, looking to maintain any kind of traffic on that north-south, on each side of that creek, to allow the agricultural operations to continue, you know, an in-house solution is a cost-effective solution that, that, that we could look at there. The change in this one would be that staff would recommend, okay, now we're starting to spend, you know, a significant amount of money, nothing compared to what it would go to tender in the open market, but if we're looking at spending forty thousand dollars for the pipe arches and then some, and then running granular costs for existing operating budget, you know, the dollars are starting to, to tick up there a little bit, so the recommendation there is that we just maintain it as municipal property. So that, that's another option there. And then the, and then the third option is, is geared towards the removal of the bridge, which would, would be devastating for the agricultural operations in that area. So that's kind of at a high level, it's there. You know, when you look at the in-house option number two, you know, we're limited at what we have for equipment, right? We don't have a crane, you know, so, you know, if we look at, you know, if somebody says, okay, well, what about option three, in-house? We don't have a crane, so we can't go in. We'd have to rent, do contracted services for that to try to go in and pick the bridge. If you picked a bridge and you have problems with the, with the supporting aprons and they collapse in the water, you're into doing a lot more work, a lot more restoration. So there's risk. The, the one that has the least amount of risk is option two. As far as a staff comfort zone, option two is where our, our comfort level is, but it really boils down to a council decision on, you know, on, on what type of service you want to provide for that bridge in, in the future.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Peter, for continuing your diligence on this file. I mean, we hoped this would have been wrapped up last fall. It's still going on, and, and I know that if we give direction, for example, for option two, that could probably be carried out, I'm guessing, before the end of the summer, while the area's dry, easy to work. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna side with what I interpreted from Peter's comments as staff support for option number two, because it's got the most knowns and the least risk for cost overruns. It is slightly more money than option one, which we had, sort of pushed forward, but the other key detail for option two for me is that we maintain ownership, we being the town maintains ownership of the entirety of the lane as it is now, which was never desired by the, the landowners. They never wanted to own it. They just really wanted to be able to get across there. And I think maintaining ownership, and speaking to other landowners in the area, I think there is potential for more future development than we had heard previously about a potential of maybe two lots. I think that there's ownership there that may be interested in pursuing even a, a potential, I'm speaking way out there, but there may be more potential for development, and so keeping maintaining ownership of that road allowance is probably beneficial for the town long-term. And I'm fully in support of option two, especially fully in support of getting it done and, and getting it over with for the sake of everybody involved.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with Counsel Richardson, and Counsel McCormack, and then Counsel Penal.
Thank you, worship. If we do the work with option two, will, would that, or will that be sufficient that if we were ever to open that road, it would sustain traffic? Or is this option two merely just a, a patch job for now, and if we ever were to open that road allowance, we'd have to do a full-scale bridge replacement, the whole works?
Through your worship, the culvert installation would be considered permanent. Where the cost would be involved opening the road would be in the approach roads on the north and south sides. You know, it's an area prone to flooding, so there'd have to be significant upgrades to the roadwork itself, but as far as the culvert, that, that, that would be more than capable of, if, if the municipality decided to want to open that road allowance at some point in time, the culverts would function as installed.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McCormack, and then I'll go to Counsel Penal.
Thank you, worship. So option one is too risky. Option three is too much money, so I'll, I'll support number two as well.
Counsel Penal?
Thank you, worship, through you, Peter. Looking at option number two here, the forty thousand dollars for the pipe arches, and then there's going to be some more costs associated with granulars and stuff, but what about the, the existing bridge that now, that would have to be taken out too, would it not?
Through your worship, so with respect to option two?
Yeah.
So with respect to option, option two, the bridge would be permanently removed and gone, and then, and then there'd be four pipe, pipe arches installed?
Right, so, so the estimate of forty thousand dollars would, would include the removal of the bridge?
Through your worship, that, that's, so, just to clarify, option three is just the, because we don't have a crane and there's risks involved with, with doing that, to lift that bridge out of there, we have limited availability for heavy equipment. So in option two, if we're doing full culvert replacement, you don't have to be careful, right? You do it at the dry season, you go in with the heavy equipment, you, you can be pretty rough getting the bridge out. You don't, you know, you're not worried about bridge abutments, or, and the stream would be dry, so you can just, you can pull, you can get pretty rough with that. Option three, you have to be very gentle, you specialize. three, you have to be very gentle, use specialized equipment, and hope that you don't have any problems with bridge abutments, or your shoreline restoration costs are going to start going up quick.
With option two, do we have a better, better idea of what final price would be then? Because it seems like everything is funneling us towards option two, with an attractive price of $40,000, but it's really not going to be anywhere near that if we're spending time and effort of picking that bridge out of there, and remove that as well. So, I'm just wondering if we could get that any closer?
Through your worship, so the costs, so not included in that is the in-house time. So, the $40,000 is a pretty up-to-date cost for pipe pricing. And then the granular, we're confident that we could fund through the existing operating budget. So, if we're just looking at the net impact to this year's budget, or next year's budget, the staff time, because you're going to go in, and you don't have to be careful with anything, you can get in and get out much quicker than you can, than you can if you're trying to be careful and work around very sensitive bridge abutments. So, you know, any of the other costs that are going to be on top of that would be relatively minor in nature. There would be a small amount of work that we've done to finalize for approvals, for permits. And, but that would be pretty minor in the grand. Option two is the one that has the, by far, the best opportunity to keep costs in check without, with unforeseen over cost overruns.
Could option two go higher than option three?
Through your worship, even with, even with removals, there's still permitting. So, if we say net zero with permitting, in staff's opinion, no.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, worship. But just for my own personal peace of mind, so, the culverts are placed in the creek prior to the removal of the bridge, and then the aggregate is placed under the bridge prior to the removal of the bridge? Is that sort of the idea, the way it works?
Through your worship, so, the construction sequencing for that would be bridge removal first. So, the bridge would get pulled, the abutments, we can pull it with dozers and excavators, because we don't have to be gentle on anything. All that would come out during dry weather season. And then you'd prepare the granular base for the four pipe arches, and then backfill with granular. But you'd only be working in a very specific area of where the pipe arches are going to be located.
And again, I don't want to belabor this anymore. We already have, I think we've belabored with enough. But if we opted for option number three, the removal of the bridge, would that be the same process as far as taking the bridge out during the dry season?
So, through your worship, so, there's two ways we could do it. Contracted services, try to pick it clean and move it out. Very likely to run into risk, and the abutments are going to fall. And then you're into, then you're doing more restoration work in there. The civil work that would be done in-house wouldn't be much different, installing the car, the culverts. And it would be pulling out the abutments and doing all the shoreline restoration in there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from council? Well, as everybody said, this has been around with us since the beginning of this term, I believe. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I was anticipating you were asking for direction, and I'm gonna note and receive and recommend option two.
I have a seconder for that. Counselor McCormack is seconding it. Any other comments or questions? I've got you on three screens, Dave, so when your hand goes up, it kind of hits me. Go ahead, please.
Just procedure one is, what do we do with resolution 474/21? Do we have to rescind that?
Madam Clerk?
Given the direction given in that resolution is still at a stage where it can be reversed, the cleanest thing to do might be to rescind that resolution, just so there's not conflicting resolutions on the books. But in this case, the town has not taken substantial enough direction down that path. The course cannot be changed at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, your preference would be, we would rescind 474-21 first, or after this one? Or together. Good idea. And combine that, combine that with rescinding the 474/21, and that would be good with that? And the seconder would be good with amending to that, to rescind the original? Okay. Peter, go ahead.
Your worship, if I could just add one point, one thing that's, there's a high probability, based on turnaround time for the permits, this is in staff available time to do it. This is very likely a 23 project. It's unlikely we can pull it off this, this summer. But in, you know, it's going to provide a solution for many years to come. So, I think it's short-term pain.
And you need the water level, too, to be, to be good. Okay. No, and that can just be communicated with the, with the people that are involved in it. Okay. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. We are at the next two-hour session segment. Does anyone need to recess for a minute, or we keep going? Keep going? Okay, that's what I see from everybody. Legislative Services proclamation, policy information. Madam Clerk?
Through your worship, as noted in the report, this is just an update based on the resolution that was passed a few meetings ago. I believe the report speaks for itself, but I am available for any questions.
Council?
Just a really small one, your worship. And I know we get into, when we have more than one proclamation, that we're going to share the weeks and split the weeks up. How are we going to, I didn't want to get into, so, say, one group wants the first and third week, which would leave the second and fourth week for somebody else. Are they going to be consecutive weeks? Are they just going to be, are we going to just break them up if we need be? So, somebody wants the first and fourth week, and then the two middle weeks to somebody else? Or does it really matter, I guess?
Through your worship, I assume, just given that staff time is required to do the flags and the lights and all of those things, we would make sure that they were consecutive and not switching back and forth through the month.
Makes all the sense in the world. Thank you.
Anything else from, from council? Seeing nothing. Recommendation that council received for information. The report. Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Counselor Richardson, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. 12.10, Legislative Services, Cataracway Source Protection Committee. Madam Clerk, I will let you speak to this as well, please.
Thank you, your worship. So, as noted in the report, we received a request from Cataracway to appoint someone from Loyalist or Napanee to the Source Water Protection Committee. The clerk in Loyalist has advised me that they had a council member put their name forward. That does not preclude this body from also putting a name forward, at which point, the clerk and myself will confer and see if we can come to a joint recommendation between our two municipalities at another meeting later this summer.
Council? Go ahead, Counselor.
Through your worship, since I'm tied up with the Waste Diversion Committee, I was going to recommend Counselor Richardson put his name forward.
Thank you, except, I'm now exempt because I'm a board member of the Cataracway Councilation Authority. So, but I appreciate your thinking of it, Counselor McCormack.
Such a kind, caring pair. So, we do, we do have someone from Loyalist who is interested in sitting on it? And there probably is just one more meeting before the term is over?
No, both our municipalities have two more meetings.
Okay. But then it is over, and it starts up again for the election?
Oh, sorry, sorry. A meeting for the committee. I thought you meant council meetings. I wouldn't expect it would be much more than one.
Okay. So, if that's the case, if we have someone in Loyalist who is interested, and I believe that it had been Mayor Verzi that sat on it, if they're interested and no one is really interested in sitting on it from here, that we let the representative from Loyalist Township fill it out for the term? How would that be for a recommendation? Move by. Counselor McCormack, sorry, go ahead.
I'll second that with a comment. No comment about the previous appointee, but if we could ensure more robust communication back to Greater Napanee, so that we're sharing the knowledge better. If they're arguably representing our interests as well, it would be good to understand those interests. And I know the board is aware, and so it's, our representative on the board is aware of it, but I think a formal communication channel is appropriate.
So, you want that as part of the, okay.
Yeah.
So, we will, we will let the person who is interested from Loyalist Township sit on it, but we would ask that we are updated on a regular basis with minutes.
Yeah, copied all correspondence.
Yeah, copied on correspondence, and so on. Does that, that do it?
Thank you.
Counselor McCormack, that's good. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Bylaws. We're getting there, folks. Bylaw number 2022-0045 to provide for the acquisition of Part Lot 22 concession to Richmond, being Part One of 29 R P R 4147, being all of PIN 45090-0012 LT, municipally known as 99 Advance Avenue, Town of Greater Napanee. First, second, and third reading. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Counselor McCormack, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. I will take the, no, I'll do them separately. Bylaw number 2022-0046 to permanently close and convey an unopened municipal highway. And this is for, this is for McCutcheon, is it not?
Yes, your worship, and I, first, second, third.
Okay, first, second, third. Sorry, I was just trying to make sure that I was getting them all in. First, second, third. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Counselor Johnson, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, because there is one, where's the one for the Mayan property?
Your worship, there is no bylaw, as we did not have the reference plan yet. It will go to the next meeting.
Okay, good. I just didn't, I wanted to make sure that we had Counselor Penal covered. Final bylaw, number 2022-0048, to provide for the acquisition of lots 25 through 26, 29 and 30 on Plan 12, Town of Greater Napanee, being all of PIN 45087-0278 LT, to acquire Helen Hutchison Nature Reserve. First, second, and third reading. Counselor Johnson, Counselor Norrie, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any new business? Any notices of motion? Any statements by members?
Four and then five.
We're going to go by wards, okay. Counselor Norrie, and then I'll go with Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick follow-up from last month, I brought up about the tents on Richmond Park Boulevard. We had a meeting with the O P P, fire, medical people, and other interested parties last week. The owner's been contacted, signs are up, but no one's taken a heavy-handed approach. The public knows, the police and medical people and fire are reaching out to them to offer help and assistance for now. And that's, and which is good to see. So, we're just waiting for that, because the weather's still good, but it seems to have diminished quite a bit up there. The, there was, I made a comment in my complaint about the brush at the fairgrounds, that the fairgrounds wouldn't remove. It's been there for years. People were climbing in there, there was smoke scene coming from it. They were worried about their safety. Today, two town trucks were there, and it's all cleaned up. The town just did it. Somebody from senior management listened, and I really appreciate it. And the, I've had some calls from citizens already about it. So, they're keeping an eye on it. Things are being done, but a heavy-handed approach right now.
Good, thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're keeping with a light-handed approach for the end of a very long evening. Springfield this year, like, first chance to be out and about after about two and a half years of being stuck inside far too much. And as we drove the backroads over the past month, I was strongly reminded of how diverse our corner of southeastern Ontario is, and the work people have invested there over the years. From simple things like well-manicured postage stamp-sized yard, to the abundance of flower and vegetable gardens, or revitalized decks, to the always-changing landscape of farming through planting seasons and care of animals, having an opportunity to watch cows go on a walkabout through a field, or see the alpacas or the cheep. It demonstrates how proud people are to live here, and they want their friends and their family to move here. They have pride in the community that they are part of. There is dedication from the people who live here, and also all the town staff who manage the 10,000 little jobs, most of which people don't recognize or think about, which build a strong base for this community. They allow us the ability to afford living here and plan for the growth, which allows for those friends and family to join us. We're all stewards of this land, and I just wanted to say thank you. So many people work so hard to do it well.
Thank you. Anything else? It is Canada Day coming up. I know that we'll all be at the S P C. I think that the whole county. I've got to be at Addington Highlands, and Loyalist, and Loyalist, and Stone Mills, and expect to see us all there. I was just looking at the weather report. So, I'm going to put, Counselor Richardson, who likes to have things done properly, you're in charge of the weather that day.
Your worship, it's all looked after.
Thank you very much.
I've got friends in high places.
Okay. I knew I could depend on you to do that. Also, celebration, we have a certificate going over to the Napanee Golf and Country Club, who on July the 1st are celebrating their 125th anniversary. So, kind of a nice, a nice thing to, to be able to do. If there is nothing further, I would please take a motion to go in, adjourn into closed session pursuant to section 239 of the municipal act, in order to discuss two personal matters about identifiable individuals and the prospective disposition of land. Move by. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Counselor Penal, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Motion to rise and report from closed session and further that all recommendations made within closed session be hereby adopted. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Council Richardson. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Within closed session, we approved the closed session minutes of June 14th, received information about the prospective disposition of land and gave direction to staff, and received information about two personal matters and gave direction to staff. All in favor of that? Motion is carried. Thank you.
We need to do the other...
Oh, and I have one more. I have one more. Sorry. Sorry. Council endorsed the staff recommendation in the confidential human resources report CAO contract and that the mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents. Okay?
And further that...
And further that council authorized staff to list a 10.5 acre parcel in the Richmond industrial park through its agency of record Rogers and Traynor. All in favor now? Fine. Thank you. By law to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the town of Baton Rouge for second and third readings, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Council McCormack, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Motion for adjournment. Council Johnson, Council Norrie, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you and good night everyone.